Mike's on your boy?
Okay, I will call to order, uh, Roseville Board of Commissioners' work session. I'll call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners' work session. This is October 22nd, 2024. Uh, just want to thank everybody for attendance, uh, tonight. I see we got a, uh, a pretty, uh, pretty lively bunch here in the, uh, in the chambers. So appreciate you guys coming out for sure. Um, we do have one item of business we're going to have to take care of tonight, um, consideration of, uh, a reimbursement policy and, uh, continuation of a public hearing that we had, legislative hearing. So we do have two of those, uh, on the agenda first. Um, before I, before I start, uh, it is, is a work session, so we don't have public comments tonight, but I do want to recognize, uh, Von Hopkins in the room this, that night. She can, and you guys can, uh, can meet, talk to her. I know, I know you've seen her on TV a lot. She's been on TV a lot in the last, uh, few weeks. Uh, she's running for District 35, I believe. Is that right?
District?
District 35, uh, NC House. I think that's the district that Terrence, uh, Evers had, um, that, uh, is sitting in currently. So it's his seat. So welcome. Thank you for coming out and, uh, appreciate that. And good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Two, uh, two weeks away. So I know, I know everybody's anxious about that. No, no, nobody's more anxious than you are probably. So welcome. Thank you. All right. So, um, first item is the consideration agenda. Um, we got, like I said, one item of new business and then, uh, three other items. We're going to get a report from the Downtown Development Association and a, a report from, um, Affordable Housing, RFP, uh, group and, uh, a Main Street project update. So how does the, what's the consideration of the agenda?
So, Lou.
All right. Got a second?
Second.
All right. Um, before we have a discussion, did you want to add?
Um, yes. I wanted to see if we could swap number four and five?
Four and five?
Bring the affordable housing, I mean, affordable housing development, RFP forward so that the, um, update on the Downtown Development Association and the Main Street Project will be back to back for continuity.
Okay. All right. So, uh, so only, only thing your request is move, uh, five up before four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Swap four and five. All right. Who made the motion? Was it Lynn Wood?
I did.
Uh, Lynn Wood, you want to amend that to include that change or not?
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to move, uh, point five up to point four.
Okay.
For the agenda.
And who's second there?
I second it. I amend my second to include moving five to four.
Okay. So I got a motion second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor say aye. No opposed. Thank you. Appreciate that, board. Appreciate that a lot. All right. Um, one thing about workshop, we move on pretty quickly and, and the first item is new business. Uh, we do have consideration of a memo expansion uh, of a, uh, reimbursement policy, which we have normally a reimbursement policy. I, I guess attorney is going to give us kind of a, some detailed information on it. I don't forget how many years we had, quite a few years, and, uh, and this is expansion of that. So, uh, so do you have a report or just a, um, readout?
Just very quick for the board's consideration. I know this is something that's been kicking around for some time and it, it, it would require, uh, the action by the Board of Commissioners to change the town and the town staff's policies with regard, uh, to reimbursement agreements and reimbursements of oversizing, uh, for public infrastructure. So all the way back in October of 2020, which seems like just yesterday, the town adopted an ordinance, uh, incorporating some statutory provisions that allow towns to provide a reimbursement for road improvements and other public infrastructure where a developer is, uh, better positioned to do the, to do that work, uh, often as part of their own efforts at a private development. Uh, we did it on Roseville Road. Uh, we entered into an agreement also in front of the Wallbrook Project to extend the scope of Main Street to just name two. Uh, more recently, however, and we actually have, uh, a case coming up here, uh, there has been a request to expand that for onsite oversizing, uh, of roadways. And, uh, the one in particular that, uh, came to the attention of our elected officials and the manager, uh, was, uh, the, uh, proposed Fowler Road thoroughfare running east to west through the center of town. Uh, those properties along the way, it's unlikely that any of them individually would require, uh, a large thoroughfare for their own project. Uh, but, uh, in terms of future planning under our comp plan, uh, it's likely that we would want to acquire 110 feet of right of way so that at the appropriate time that can be built out. But that's not offsite. So offsite reimbursement is, uh, something that, uh, the town may be required to do, but onsite reimbursement is often something that a developer does as just the cost of doing business as they develop their property. Uh, the thought is, and has been presented to me, is that in some cases at least, uh, that seems unfair, uh, that, uh, the, the ask is, is too big and, uh, the proposal, not the proposal, but the item for consideration for the board is whether to expand our reimbursement policy to include certain onsite kind of needs where it is oversizing. And, uh, that's the memo that is before you, and it proposes that for new four-lane thoroughfares, uh, the oversizing portion onsite would also be eligible for a reimbursement, uh, a reimbursement agreement. Uh, this is still less than some other towns do, uh, and I should throw this out there. Uh, many communities have a formula of credits, not a reimbursement of the expense that is provided for oversizing. Uh, that's not something Roseville has needed, uh, to this point. It may be something that the, the board looks at in the future where linear feat of oversizing is just credited at an amount that is set at the beginning of each budget year, and you don't end up in trying to reimburse the actual expense. You're just crediting on a linear foot of extra right-of-way. Or in towns that have their own public utilities for water and sewer, you, uh, provide a certain credit for oversized pipes, for example. It, it, you don't have to calculate it each time. Uh, Roseville does not have that yet. So you may have heard of oversizing credits or reimbursement credits. Uh, Roseville does not have that ordinance yet. We have reimbursement agreements that reimburse the actual expense of whatever the oversizing was. In this case, it would be excess acreage provided wider than, uh, what the project would otherwise require. That is a very fast, I don't think I used any periods in that ramble. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Yes, sir. Just one. How does this benefit the town of Roseville?
Uh, in terms of, uh, the benefits to the town of Roseville, it would accentuate your ability to, uh, uh, help future planning because you're acquiring the ultimate right-of-way width, and you're also not unduly burdening certain properties that have these features in our comp plan that would prevent them from being developed in a timely way. Uh, in some communities, you might not have to worry about it as much because they are going vertical and there's such an intensity of use that it's not really a big deal to provide the extra right-of-way. Uh, for much of Roseville, our densities are sort of moderate, and so, uh, additional right-of-way or additional sidewalk or whatever the additional public infrastructure is may be a break-the-deal kind of expense. Uh, that, that would be the pros.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And if, if I could add an additional, when you look at our comp plan, we have certain, um, corridors or, um, what will be future areas of, um, business parks or expanded areas across 401 that this type of policy would indirectly kind of, for lack of better words, incentivize. Um, it would just assist in the developing, development of those areas which are for a little bit further away from our town center. And so it, as our town attorney alluded to, it just makes it, um, it brings some of those things that we want to see closer to us, um, and keeps it from being put off further into the future. As you know, there've been several, um, projects that we've tried to do around certain corridors that haven't been, um, successful because of some of the undue pressure, um, and requirements for some of those roadways and such.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is, uh, it's also Fowler Road is part of our community transportation plan?
Yes.
And the plan all along was a four-lane road. We don't need it today, but, um, in this project, you know, the opportunity exists for the easement right-of-way for the four-lane for the future use, and that is over and above what the, the project normally would, would cover for an expense. So, uh, you know, it makes sense for the town to look at, uh, reimbursing in some fashion the developer for this project, just to make it easier for us down the road to fulfill our, uh, objective with the corridor going down Fowler Road.
And on that point, I should clarify, uh, the, the, uh, motion that is at your place that may or may not be appropriate following your discussion, uh, does, uses the language that, uh, this sort of onsite would be available for, uh, all required oversizing of new four-lane thoroughfares as shown on the Roseville Community Transportation Plan. So that would be broader than Fowler as the, the CTP does show, uh, uh, more than just, uh, Fowler as a future four-lane.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
I, I guess a couple of points I will make. Um, you know, we've been talking about Fowler Road. How many years now? Who's been on here the longest, Paul? You maybe, how many years we've been talking about Fowler Road?
It's been a long.
Been a long time. And we always knew that, you know, it's going to be hard to put in because it's, I think, I think the price in 2019 was $44 million for Fowler Road. And, uh, with, you know, escalation that we've had since 2019 is, or was it 17? Maybe 17. Since then, it's really expensive. So, you know, do we take a skin in the game, I think, is what is being asked tonight. Um, and I, I guess the second thing is, you know, it's difficult, it's difficult for this 150 acres. How's it a little smaller acres that's going to be going through there? How are they going to deal with it in the future? Um, because it, you know, it could end up dead end if no one else can help with it, you know? So just a couple of considerations. So, um, any other discussion? Any other discussion from the board members?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I enter, um, I entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll, uh, move adoption of a new town policy to provide reimbursement from transportation fee credits under Code Chapter 52 for all required oversizing of new four-lane thoroughfares as shown on the Roseville Community Transportation Plan. This policy would be effective immediately.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion second. Any other discussion? Not hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. I think four, where were you at, Lynn Wood?
I was aye.
So four, one, and, uh, Commissioner Veilga opposed. All right. Thank you, board. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, next item, um, is continued legislative hearing for REZ 2401 and ANX 2402 Merit Property. Um, so I see Meredith's up, so go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Curran and Town Board of Commissioners. For your consideration this evening is the rezoning and annexation for the Merit Property, and we are continuing this hearing from the September 17th meeting. Just to reorient everyone, this rezoning request is for 150 acres. That is 6,200 Emily Lane, a portion of 1224 Roseville Road and a portion of unaddressed property on Lewisburg Road. And the request is to change the zoning from residential low to residential high and general commercial, both as conditional zoning districts. So at the hearing on September 17th, is, these were the notes I made when you all were talking, and there were, uh, three things that came up that, uh, you all wanted the applicant to address. I'm going to go a little out of order. I'm going to start with the middle bullet. One of them was to show the parkland, and the applicant has been working with our Parks and Recreation Department. In the image in the top right-hand corner of the slide is a park concept plan for that northeastern corner of the property. So, uh, that item appears to be fulfilled. Um, also with Parks and Greenways, you all had mentioned you wanted to see greenways and side paths on the concept site plan. And side paths are required along Fowler Road, and, uh, the applicant has not provided an updated concept site plan. However, it's, uh, definitely worth noting and important to note that the applicant would not be able to move past any other development review step without showing the side paths. So the next development review step would be a preliminary subdivision plat. And in order for that step to be approved, the side pass would have to be in the plat. After that would be construction infrastructure drawings. Again, the side pass would have to be included in the construction documents and obviously in the final plats that would come at the end. Um, so again, no updated concept site plan, but, um, safeguards with our ordinance requirements in the next development review steps. Um, one thing that came up, or another thing that came up at the September 17th hearing, we had some comments on Lake Serenity, and I hadn't heard of Lake Serenity before, so that was interesting. It looked, um, like it could be quite nice. I know there were concerns about preserving the tree line and, um, general safety in that area. I know the applicant, um, has spoken with me about a sewer line going through that area, so they're not quite sure, um, what could happen, but I believe the applicant would be available to make some comments on that topic and, uh, start to address those concerns. And what questions do you all have about these, uh, missing pieces?
Where is the lake at on that drawing?
The lake, let me go back a slide. Um, the lake is, uh, it kind of goes off right in this area. You can see it better up there. So the southwestern corner below the property. There are, um, the lots are a little bit away from that area.
I'm interested in the sewer line conversation, honestly, um, because that seemed to be, that's going to be, I'm wondering more about that. And then if I heard you correctly, they are going to be, uh, keeping the tree lines as the, as the homeowners have also, as there's no...
Sure. Um, there, um, is a stream buffer, a repairing buffer. You can see, um, colored the darker green here, and, um, trees would be retained in that area. And the applicant can certainly answer any additional questions or provide some more, um, information if needed there.
So was any of this the required, a requirement to talk about, oh, no, that's the wrong one. The use of the park that wasn't submitted in writing?
This concept plan, uh, has been submitted through email, and there's been extensive conversations with some Parks and Recreation staff on that. The applicant may need to clarify, um, more on that because this has not been submitted as a condition.
And greenways and side pass on concept plans would be approved by the staff, correct? As long as it met its criteria, it wouldn't come back to us to see those.
Right. Um, we would be reviewing that, our technical review committee would be looking at that, as I mentioned, with the preliminary subdivision plat and the construction infrastructure drawings and the, the final plat to make sure those pieces were there.
All right.
Can't get by without them. They're required and important.
Yeah, they're required, but I'd, I'd like to know where they're going. I don't, I don't like not seeing something and just be given a, a cartoon. It, it should actually be on there already, so.
Meredith, does this, does this site under the LDO require greenways internal to the site?
Um, great question. Not, um, where, what we're looking at right now. Previously, when, with the initial application, uh, the property that's unaddressed on Lewisburg Road was a larger piece. And if you can see my mouse here, the property went past where this, uh, stream buffer is. And as per the town's greenway plan, a greenway is required on the western side of this stream buffer. So since that portion of the property is no longer part of the rezoning case, that, obviously that greenway is not required.
Thank you.
No more questions for you. Yes, I do have a question. Um, with concerns with the neighborhood meeting. I noticed in the first time, uh, in the packet, it showed that there was a meeting, but no one attended. So was there a second meeting held?
I'd be more comfortable with the applicant answering that question.
Let, let, let's Meredith finish her.
I'll finish, okay.
Let Mayor finish her.
I hear an answer sometimes in here. Doesn't reflect properly.
Now they said they want to finish asking me questions, and then you can pop up for more.
Just take a note of that. Go, go ahead.
That was, um, all I had here. Just want to make sure I was answered, all of your questions, and, uh, these bullet items were addressed.
So I think the other question I have about the parkland is that, I, it'll probably be for them as well, but is it going to be donated to the town or is it something they're going to maintain?
So are you covering the conditions or is the applicant covering the conditions?
I can, um, go through the conditions that we have. The conditions are the same as what we saw at the September 17th meeting. Obviously, the concept site plan is incorporated as a condition. There's a six-unit limit, limit for the townhome structures. The amenities must be built by the 400th building permit. This is an age-restricted development for those 55 and over, and there'll be no more than 505 lots, and that comes out to a density of about three and a half units per acre. And with the commercial, general commercial pieces, the applicants, um, committing to prohibiting tattoo shops, vape and tobacco stores, and vehicle rental and sales on those sites. And if you have any more traffic questions, we do have Pierre Tong here from Stantec. He works with Matt Peach. And what other questions do you have?
I have a question about the project in general and where it sits on Fowler Road.
Okay.
And the impact that has to the in, industrial park or that we had a study done on.
Sure.
So what, what is the impact and how much of that project space acreage is taking, is taken for this? I know the acreage of it, but how, how big of an impact does this have on the plan that we already had in place?
The commercial growth feasibility study?
Mm-hmm.
Um, this, I know, uh, this larger piece in the middle, um, I believe that is the Emily Lane property, or maybe it's the Roseville Road property. Um, that was identified as a site that could be marketable for, uh, industry, you know, light industrial uses. And we also have, um, um, Michael McFarland here. He might be able to add a little more detail on that plan. Uh, do you have a good memory on the, the parcel in the commercial growth feasibility study?
Sure.
Okay. Might be better than mine.
Yeah, th- this was actually a parcel, the, the, the big rectangle there was a parcel that, from that study, the consultants really liked. Um, and, um, it was among, one parcel of among 25 or so that we looked at. And, um, and again, that was just kind of a study, um, just to look at possibilities. And I think we're going to continue, um, looking at that, at, at the area to the east, I guess, of Roseville Road and kind of south of the high school a little bit, um, as we move forward with the comprehensive plan update coming up. And then as we continue to work with Wake County on, um, identifying sites for like a business park or an employment center. Um, so yeah, I think the hard part in a growing area is a lot of land does get, you know, bought up for, for residential and other projects, um, before maybe a industrial developer comes along and, and that's just up for towns to decide. Um, but I think there are some other places where that can take place, uh, in our ETJ right now.
Is this parcel one of the larger ones that was cited for industrial use?
Yes, at about 90 to 100 acres.
And how many more do we have that large?
There were...
Weren't there like three?
Yeah, there was three that they kind of ranked that came to the top. One is, um, on the southern side of town. That's about close to 300 acres. And we were looking at that for maybe some mixed use and kind of a lifestyle district, um, as you come in from Raleigh. Um, there's a few others along, you know, you really want to, I think, industrial's probably interested to go along 401, uh, to not have to come too far off of 401 to go somewhere. Um, this is kind of, this parcel's kind of across from the high school too, so that was going to present some challenges. Um, so we kind of never got further along than the just identifying land process to really look at the feasibility.
Right.
Um, and just for what it's worth, we haven't received calls from industrial developers to say, hey, we're looking at this area.
That was going to be one of my questions.
Yeah, so, um, but I think there's some, you know, we're starting to look at, and I'll propose for the, for the comprehensive plan to start looking a little bit south and, and east, um, of this area right now, um, if this proposal goes through. Um, and then there's still some land there too, as you come in, like I said, from Raleigh and where 401 and Main Street splits. Uh, I think there's, there's some farmland there. There's a possibility where we could do some nice things there with some, some commercial development, so.
Thank you very much.
We did, I had a real quick question. For that study, we actually did, we did spend around $50,000 to do that study, correct?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think they had some more clarity, correct me if I'm wrong, Meredith, is the 100 acres on the Merit property was never, comprehensive plan still says it's mixed use like it's being presented, right?
Right.
It was just a study said it could be used for this in the future, but...
Yes.
The board chose not to put that comprehensive plan in place at the time. We do want to relook at the comprehensive study, all, total thing, right?
Yes. We've recently kicked off a comprehensive plan update, so we'll be looking at everything over the next, uh, several months.
But if you look, if you look at it tonight...
It's still...
The Merit property is zoned, or in the comprehensive plan... the Merit property is zone, or in the comprehensive plan is correct, from what they asked.
The, here's the future land use map, and the larger tract is designated as a mixed-use neighborhood. And then, the two smaller pieces are designated as business park. So, it's about two-thirds mixed-use neighborhood, one-third business park, as far as the land use designation for this, for the subject properties.
Any other questions for Meredith?
No, Meredith. No, sir. Thank you, Meredith.
Sure. Let's see, so for the applicant, you were asking about the parkland piece, and there was one other question.
Sewer.
The sewer, thank you, and this piece, okay, great.
Thank you. My name's Jay Galise, American Engineers, I represent the client on this Merit property.
Move the mic a little closer to you.
Hello, is that on?
I don't know.
Is that a switch there somewhere?
It should be on.
Is that on? Can you hear them?
Yeah.
It was closer. Yeah, Jay Galise, American Engineer, represent the client, BRD, on this Merit project that we're going forward with. While sitting in the audience, there were three questions that came up, and I'd like to clarify that. The side path is included on the north side of Fowler Road. I had sent that to Eddie early on to let him know we've done it. This map is so small, you can't really show a side path on the map, so you'd never be able to see it. The second thing that's important to the town, is important to us also, is we're 100% committed for that park going to the town. And it's on the record. Now, we're going to work till it gets it done, but Eddie and I have been going back and forth on all the details and what it, we're trying to prepare this to go to the Recreation Board, so they can give their comments in, and we can incorporate what they want to do. So, when we come back to you, to the board, hopefully, we made everybody happy, but we'll try. The last thing on the menu that we've been talking about was the sewer line. The people on Upchurch Road, by the way, I have worked, I've worked with almost every property on and over there, getting easements, working for sewer easements, working for different things that the town needed to get in the ground, to get the Harris Creek in, so that would open up the whole west side. And I think everybody to a T will tell you while working with me, I've been over backwards to be sure of the integrity of their lots and their houses are taken care of. So, I understand the lake of Upchurch and how important it is to the people. Unfortunately, we've got a sewer line we've got to accommodate across there, and picking a spot with all the environmental issues, and the sewer line, finding a spot where we can actually keep the trees there to keep the integrity of the park is the challenge that we've got to face. I've got a little, put a little map so you can kind of understand what we're looking at.
Thank you.
This shows you all the plans, all the buffers.
Thank you, sir.
And approximately where we're doing the sewer, but the bottom line, the sewer, we decided on by the state and the city of Raleigh, because they're the ones that tell us, we're going to plan for their review.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, good luck, Meredith.
Alright, excellent.
And... So, just to clarify where we are here, the upper end of the lake, as you see the lake on the bottom, where you see those crosshatched areas and all, that is delineated wetlands that has gone through the core and, and the process of being proved of the location of where that is. And this is a perennial stream that goes down, so a perennial stream has a 50-foot buffer on both sides. So, given that, and the fact that our property stopped short, we have to, the red line is where the sewer line is proposed to go. That's where we hope to get it. And if you can look through that sewer line, a little bit north of the lake, you'll see that there's some trees down below. I'm touching something there. And where, where our sewer line is going, there's some trees on the other side and some trees on the lower side. But where that's properly located, there's going to be a path of 30 to 40 feet that has to be cleared for the sewer line to go through. And we're committed to whatever it is to try to adjust it to maintain as many trees as we can for the homeowners that live over there. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, sir, I've got a question for you. As far as, and I think last time, we talked about the safety. So, with that, thank you for the explanation of the sewer line. But right where the blue line is around the property, could there still be, I think, I can't remember which...
Where the, where the blue line is?
Yes, sir.
I mean, if that's the property line.
Yes, sir, could there be a fence still to that way to prevent some of the citizens that are going to be living there coming down to that pond?
We actually haven't approached that problem yet, or addressed that.
Yeah, I remember the one the residents had a concern about that last time.
Yeah, but what we, what we're trying to do is find out if the sewer line has to go north, so if the easement is on our property line or down below our property line. But in that little area right there, putting a fence right there with a...
Depending on the engineering, I mean, if you had to go south or north, I'm just saying, still have some type of fence line.
Yeah, we have negotiated an easement for the property owners that live in there for the location of this thing right now, right now. Getting with them.
That's what, one of the concerns of one of the citizens had last month, so just trying to get some clarification behind that.
Well, we'd be glad to take that in consideration, but I'd like to be able to get the sewer line done and know where that's located, so we can see how much trees are taken care of and what that looks like first.
Yes, sir, understood.
Jay, it sounds like you're at the mercy of, you said, state and city entities. Have you given any timeline at all? Have you been given any timeline at all, and when you can?
On this?
Yes, on the sewer line.
On the sewer line?
On the sewer portion, yes.
Well, sewer line is going to feed the first part. If I had to tell you, the first part of the project, phase one will come in up near to one part and do a second part. And then, this part over the fence, I mean, on the other side of the creek, will probably come as a phase two or phase three. The sewer line has to go in up front to service anything on the front part of Roseville Road. The sewer line is oversized, so it will serve other areas and other lands that are upstream of this project.
I, I understand, but I, I think I heard you say that the, we are kind of waiting for how much of the lot trees we're going to be able to maintain?
Well, we've hadn't submitted it to the Core or to the City of Raleigh. We just got this environmental issue back, and we can't design it till we stay out of the buffer and get out of the buffer for that thing. So, determining where that is on the ground, how the survey is laid out, and then design the sewer line, run by it, sit it to the city, and if the city okay's it, then we send it to the Deaner, Department of Natural Resources, and have their comments, and if they adjust it or whatever they have to do, then we'll have a fine line, and we can know exactly what kind of screening we can do to protect their integrity of the lake.
And I, I think I heard, and please, if I'm correct, there was a problem with runoff as well in terms of being able to maintain flooding or issues with potential flooding as well?
Well, we have to follow the state, state, local erosion control, state, federal standards on all of that. I will give you a little history, and I think the gentleman down here can help you. From all the comments I've heard from the homeowners down there, that erosion that's down on that side that's backed up that you're looking at, almost every one of them said it came when 401 was put in. When 401 was come in, that thing just drained back down through and washed out some soil, made the creek bigger, and settled at the top of their pond. But what we're doing, we have to do the BMPs, the retention ponds and sign things, so it will not go off the site. But if they get, they were not, they're not, probably not going to get any flooding from us. What they're going to get it from is what's above that's going on, the points going in, we're going in. Is it going to change the nature of that? Probably a little bit, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a question not pertaining to that stuff, but the, basically, the layout of the property. I'm looking at a map, it's really small here, but it looks like, is it correct to say that all the, the units on here are going to be townhomes?
No, the units down here are single-family.
Okay, and do you have an idea? So, the map I'm looking at says two-unit townhomes, 164, three-unit town, three to six townhomes, 114. So, do you have a breakdown of single-family versus...
If you look at the layout, everything on the other side of this lake here
Okay.
is single-family.
Okay.
That's single-family. The towns are up in here and a little bit down in there.
Okay, do you have an idea of percentage of townhome versus single-family?
Well, let me see, I think we have, I had it written down somewhere on one of the maps that they showed you before.
I believe it's 225 single-family and 278 townhomes. That's what I recall.
Where'd you get that from, Michael?
From the reading in the, in here somewhere. Let's see if I can find it.
Now, most of those townhomes are going to be two-unit townhomes.
Okay.
And not going to be five or six. The way your ordinance is written, for us to be able to sell them, we have to put them in as townhomes and not duplexes, because they won't give the property. So, what that does is separate, gives a good side yard, gives them individual units to go in, and works for everybody, I think.
I think the biggest issue I have is with the amount of units. We're talking about age-restricted, and we keep putting age-restrict on everything, and then we're talking about two-level townhomes. We're talking about, I don't know, I'm not 55 yet, but I know when I'm 55, hopefully, when I'm still, if I'm still around, I'm not going to be driving any less than I am now. So, that's, that's the biggest issue to me, putting that tag on that and saying that, it just doesn't... If it's 65 or older, I, I see a difference there. 55 or older, I don't see a difference, and that's, that's the big concern. I have never heard anybody say, man, I can't wait to move into a, a two-level home. I just, I've never heard that before, so.
Well, we're only at three units an acre. This is designated for high density. Most places that develop anywhere from three to six, or three is usually low-density. To y'all, it's not low-density, it's kind of medium-density. But what's going on, when you have areas that are designated for eight to 10 units an acre, and you don't put them on there, that reduces your future tax base to be able to pay the bills, so you're losing income from where we stand and what you're doing. You can do eight to 10 units an acre, beautiful, and get good products, get good things on the ground. It gives you a tax base that's going to have to pay the bills down the road. So, three units an acre, what's designated to go high-density, I think we've done a good job of putting that together, so it works for the town.
Alright, sir, I have a couple of questions for you. With the 505 proposed units, how many of those units with our town have an affordable housing plan coming? Especially since seniors, a lot are on fixed incomes.
Yeah, we have not approached the affordable housing plan based on the fact that we're bringing a new product to town. We're bringing some that hasn't been done before, and the elderly puts it into another thing where you don't have the driving, you don't have the schools, you don't have the impact. But the question of affordable housing has never come up to us during the process of this thing.
Okay, that's, that's great.
You know, if that was something that was discussed early on, we could discuss it, but it was never, never part of the program up to this point.
Okay, so how much are these units and the square footage of the units?
That, square footage is, I'm not sure I can tell you, and I'm not sure what they're going to go for. The price is based on how much they're doing for the lots. When you develop a community like this, whatever you have into the land and development usually works to about one-third of what the house is. So, when you see a house on the market, that's three, that's 600,000, 200,000 of that is in preparation for the lots. So, this particular site, we've had many challenges to overcome because of the rock. They were talking about, would this be better as an industrial? I can tell you right now, there's no industrial site that's going to ever look at this site, because they can get land cheaper than spending 100, $150,000 to level it all for the rock. So, it's just not practical to do that here. And we have been able to go through and work the contours to make the numbers work. We're, right now, we're a positive project to go forward. But when you have that much rock that's right on the surface, it's a huge challenge.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sneed, you were asking about the units, the breakdown? I think on the, on the TIA report, it mentions 227 units of, of single-family and 278 units of townhome.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I did have a question about the neighborhood meeting, that was it. Last time, we noted inside the packet that there were no attendance at, uh, question. Were there another meeting held and the invited show, or are they here?
We advertised a meeting, followed procedures, came there, and nobody, nobody actually came. One person came by to say hi, I think, I think Tom came by to say hi. He's not in the town, he lives in Upchurch, but he came by to see the project and just get used to what was going on, came by to say hi, but there wasn't any dissension or anybody there that showed up.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think I missed it. How big was that park that you want to give to the town?
I think it's plus or minus four acres, I think, is what it is right there, yeah.
Any more questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Any more questions for staff?
I have a question for the traffic engineer.
Sure.
I had asked Mr. Peach last time, just to see if you know, you may not know the answer.
Hey, good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing great, thank you. So, I had asked Mr. Peach last time if, based on the 55 and over communities, in theory, there is less traffic because people are older. Have the numbers been adjusted to today's standards of our older population that you are aware of?
So, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a specific land use code for senior adult living. So, those come with a lower trip rate than if we had just standard townhouses. So, yes, we have adjusted for senior adult housing.
But has it, you don't know, how old are those numbers? Because 55-year-old today is probably not the same, as Paul was alluding to, the same 55, including myself here. You know, so have the numbers, are the numbers realistic numbers today? Because I don't know many 55-year-olds that are sitting at home watching soap operas these days.
We pulled, we pulled all the numbers from the latest version of the Trip Generation Manual that the Institute of Transportation Engineers puts out, so that's the latest data that we have. As to how like old that data is, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Alright, thank you. I'm good.
You have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Anything else?
Yeah, this is a continuation, right, David?
It was. It was, it was a continuation of the public here.
Comments from the public.
Uh, you can.
Okay, alright, let's do that, then a Merit, and we'll bring you back up. Okay, I don't think we had a sign-up sheet, but does anybody want to speak for or against this project? I know some of you did last time, come on up. State your name and address again.
Name is Kamala Agarwal, and then address is 5008 Upchurch. Let me just write that down here.
That looks like it only has one exit. It looks like it only has one exit, too, doesn't it? And then, one exit on the Fowler Road.
Can I start?
But over point will be developed, right?
Yeah. It's two, it's two exits, and two exits.
I see that one right there, right here, and that one into another property over there, and this one into another property.
See, this is Roseville Road again, so you got that one and that one.
But is that one down there on the end? I don't think that's one, or the other one. That one is one, the other one is not.
Yeah, this one is.
Uh, can I start? Uh, can I start?
It's a small one.
Hi.
State your name.
Uh, my name is Kamal Agarwala. I live at, uh, 5008 Upchurch. All these guys are the Upchurch guys. So, my main concern was with the lake again. Like the engineer mentioned, when the bypass was made, we actually lost about an acre and a half of lake. I mean, we can show satellite photos of, this is what happened. Deforesting, and, and not only that, but there's a lot of, like, wildlife there, too. Like, multiple times, we've seen bald eagles come. It's, it's very nice, and, you know, fishing and all that stuff. So, all that land cutting, um, you know, tree cutting is actually pretty important to us, and I just wanna state that, like, all of us here. So we would like some answers before, like, you guys approve it, if that's possible, like, hey, what is a concrete answer here? Because first, um, you know, they may take an easement to make the sewer, and we're like, okay. And then there was a second one with the expansion. They expanded it, um, to, like, double the size, and we're like, okay, that needs to be done. But at a certain time, like, we're like, please, give us something back to you on the north side of the lake, you know? Hey, you have 150 acre, whatever this is. Is it really that bad to just leave a couple acres on the top or something? I don't know. So that's one thing. Um, surface runoff is a problem. I have video footage telling you, like, it's a stream. We couldn't take my car across. So, it is impacting. It has built up. Mostly, like, we're young people. If you need to go get to work and do something, you might not be able to do it. So, um, that's also a thing. And the, the, the other point I wanted to make, one of the biggest reasons for that wall is because we don't wanna take liability. If somebody drowns in that lake, I have, um, what do you call that? Insurance policy, right, that I'm buying, and the multiple members around the lake that have bought that and bearing that expense, because if you get sued, who's taking the responsibility? So, and I'm paying, you know, umbrella policies out of my own pocket to make sure if that happens, please. So that's, that's, that's it. Um, if you guys wanna talk about anything I missed?
No, it's just the silt thing, losing to the lake and dredging it and then saving it. It's gonna be gone before I.
It comes to the podium, sir.
He, he would need to come up, speak into the mic if he wants.
So, make you wanna write your name and just? Well, not really. I'm, I'm just an old, old guy, and, and that's my concern. I mean, I, I guess I'll have to do this with a formality.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, name. What's my name?
I'm an old soldier. I love rules.
You get to be my age, you'll have the same appreciation for what's my name. So, I designed and built my house in this beautiful piece of heaven out here, uh, 24 years ago. Can't believe it.
April, I know April from Granite Falls. It's always nice to see you. I've had some heart surgery lately, so pardon me, but the, the, Steve McNulty, who lives, well, that didn't show. He, he lives up there where we're going, we're gonna try to connect, you know, so we'd have an, an alternate route out. We've only got one route in off of Jonesville Road. But that didn't, that didn't pan out, because they abandoned that part down there for some environmental cost reasons, according to Jay. But, since the bypass and, and, um, what's the name of another subdivision up there that's been flooding our entrance as we come in, about 100 yards down, when you come into the subdivision, uh, floods out like crazy since, um, Carlton Point. Yes, yes, I hadn't lost it all, but, uh, Carlton Point, when you come about 100 and so yards off of, off the paved road, there's a culvert that's been there, and since Carlton Point, uh, there was a dip in the road. Of course, it was always washing out, but there's a distinct dip in the road. And we've talked about, you know, with Jay and some of the other people, about putting in culverts so we could, at least it would carry the water out during a storm, any kind of a heavy rain. And so we, we're locked in there. Anytime there's a heavy rain, three, four-inch rain for a matter of hours, and if it's, it's a heavy rain, we can't, you know, we can't get out of there for any emergency reasons. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed, e- either additional culverts or something to carry that load of water coming from Carlton, Carlton Point. And that's when it started, because I've been out there way before Carlton Point was. And then at the Harris Creek, there's four, four or five streams that feed, but Harris Creek's the main feed on the, would be the west end of the lake, I guess, south. Be the east end of the lake, excuse me, where, where it feeds the lake, the main feed to Lake Harris Creek. Literally, we're, we're losing it because of all the sediment coming in there. And we just wanna save the lake and, and have, somebody help us out. And we've had congressmen out there, barefoot, whatever his name was a long time ago, and they said they'd look into it. And of course, nobody's done anything. But we're losing the lake. The sediment comes in there heavy. Every rainstorm we've got, and we've literally, really, lost about 10% of the lake, and if it continues at this rate, I wasn't joking, it'll probably be gone by the time I'm gone. But, uh, we just, we just like to have, you know, have some he- help in preserving the lake and maybe dredging it, dredging it out to catch that silt and somehow, uh, save it from a- actually coming out, you know, continuing to lose the lake. That's pretty much it. Just need help.
Thank, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anybody else scared to speak?
Good evening, mayor and board, and staff and community. My name is Sheila Sutton. I live at 403 Frere Court here in Roseville. And in listening to the discussion about this property, and being a 58-year-old who does not want stairs anymore, I do think if it's gonna be advertised as 55 and older, um, we need to consider that. Because a lot of people, not even in their 50s, may not want stairs anymore. So I hope you guys will consider that. And the affordability issue is a concern, because when you're advertising to a certain age group, it sends a message that maybe we're gonna provide something that's a little more affordable. And we know that we have a challenge in Roseville of affordable housing. So why not look at that? So I would encourage to look at that. And it sounds like there's a lot of questions on the environmental issues, so I hope you all will consider this further, or deny it, um, because you don't have to say yes to it. But if it's advertised as 55 and older, what I'm concerned about is, as a 58-year-old, I don't want stairs. So why not consider something that, um, older people would want to be a part of, if you're gonna have that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Sherri Bauer, and I live at 4816 Grand Slam Avenue, which is right off of Roseville Road and the bypass. Um, and the whole 55 and up, I kind of just wanna say what Sheila has said. I'm older than 55, and I'm on the road all the time, and I hate stairs as well. So, um, I don't feel like the 55 and up is any kind of a benefit to, um, to, you know, doing the density and all of that stuff. I wasn't gonna speak about this, and I think 65 and up, you could say, maybe those people aren't gonna be on the road. But me coming out of my road, um, with the traffic already, the houses that are going in right across the street from where I live, and, um, the high school, it's already a nightmare for us to get out, especially, like, early morning and during school hours, rush hour in the afternoon. Um, I just think that saying that the traffic study said that at 55 and older, you're not driving, is kinda crazy. I think that that, it needs to be, that needs to be considered as well. So, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for murder?
Thank you.
All right, board.
Um, any questions for staff, um, town manager, or?
I have a question for Dave. With what citizen was saying about the liability insurance that him and the fellow neighbors were taking out, so that way there's no lawsuit, I need some clarification on that.
So the biggest challenge for any lawyer is to, uh, provide answers to hypotheticals, because the answer is going to be entirely fact-dependent. I, I, I don't know enough facts to really advise the board in this area as to how potential liability might play out. So let me go a different direction and throw out for the board that there are many ponds and lakes and stormwater devices in the town of Roseville. They would all be subject to the same set of factual exploration. This is not a unique circumstance that a piece of property has a lake nearby. How different developments have chosen to address that runs the gamut. And there certainly are things that some communities and some developments have done, whether that is a fence, or a wall, or a buffer. Probably leave it right there.
Thanks, Dave.
I, I have one more question for the developer. And the, the land, the runoff that is gonna, could potentially be experienced in these neighborhoods is, since they've already been impacted by other developments, how big of an impact is this development gonna have on that neighborhood? And what measures are you putting in place to assure that they're not gonna be further impacted than they already are?
What we're doing is, we have to follow the state has standards that address when you have runoff, how you have to capture it, how you have to take the nitrogen out, how you have to support it, how you have to retain a certain, uh, storm over and above what it is to reduce that. You have to filter it out, and you have filters at the end to reduce the sediment. There's sediment fences all the way around. So the rules in, uh, development that you have in comfort from the state, from, uh, Wake County in particular, they're very difficult, and how they calculate their drainage, and how many manholes you have to, uh, catch basin you have to do. They're very difficult. So when you follow all of those out, most of the developments I have seen come out fine. I mean, you're in an awkward spot that you're down there in that section right there. But, you know, if we, if we had a storm like they did out west, it would be a problem. But normally, uh, I don't see us causing them any trouble or any problem. When you first get out there, you have to put extensive silt fence and different ponds out there before you even start grading to ensure that even do the early parts of the project, that you're taking care of that runoff and doing what you can. You know, I'm not gonna stand here in front of you and say, "There's not gonna be something happening," but for, for the most part, and the rules and regulations that are in place, they're very complete.
See, and, but my only concern with that is, um, it was stated that this was started when 401 was built. So were there not measures in place that should've been followed when 401 was built, so they didn't experience these problems? And not saying you're not gonna do what you need to do, but should there be extenuating circumstances or things that happen, do you have measures in place to correct, um, any issues that may come up? I don't want them impacted any more than they already have, because I wouldn't like not being able to leave my house when I want to.
Like I say, I've, I've known all these people out here. I'm gonna do everything I can to protect them and everything we can on the board. I have no idea what 401 did and how many times they had trouble to get that much down there. How long has 401 been in the ground?
How long has it?
Ten years. Been a long time, hasn't it?
Ten years. Ten years.
Ten years?
Okay, so that's probably where a lot of that came from, and there were some developments above that, I think, that come through the same pipes that get down through there, where 401 crosses. Thank you. Any other questions?
Please, uh, thank you. I, I guess, um, Dave, maybe clarify for the commissioners here on run, runoff, stormwater runoff. A project can't add to it, right? You can't, you have to maintain your own run. How does that work? Do you know?
So the design, and, and I'll, I'll probably have to defer to the planning department as to how Wake County is administering this right now, but, but that is the general concept. The general concept is that the stormwater runoff after development is the same or better as pre-development. So you have a post-development runoff. The, the question is, what happens during storm events? And, uh, there are different standards for different levels of storm event planning. Do you design to the 10, the 50, the 100, or the thousand-year storm, as we just saw out in the mountains? Those do change, and so there are different strategies and different developments that adopt different plans.
Thank you. Any other questions? What is the playbook, board?
I, I personally, Mr. Mayor, I think there's still many questions and many more answers. And me personally, especially around the 55 and older, um, the, the pricing, the, um, not ability, not really able to give any concrete information about how much land is gonna be taken with the sewer, the traffic impact analysis, there's just some questions that I think that we need a few more answers on, personally. So, today, I will be in now. So I would like to say that we need to motion on to a hearing, um, for another session, please.
So.
Commissioner Long, was that a request for a continuance?
Uh, yes, motion to continue the legislation here and other further considerations for RAZ 2401 and NX 24244, future dates certain to, uh, town board or commissioners meeting.
So, we got a motion. So, um, make sure we document the comments that he wants to follow up on. Before we discuss that, is any, is there a second to this emotion?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion second. Okay, now we can discuss it. So, what were the, what would items you want to follow up on?
I, I need, what I would like to see is have, is more clarity around the sewer line, um, how much land is gonna be taken, if possible. Um, I think that's a, an ask of the community. Um, I think that is worthwhile. Personally, I'd like to have some more assurances around the runoff, um, you know, with not being able to leave your house after torrential storms. I'd like to have more investigative work there. And then, most importantly, the pricing piece of it, you know, and the storage. You know, we, we're talking about senior housing at pricing that is not gonna be affordable. I think we need to really make sure that we have that edge in the stone, because at this point, I'm not a fan of the way it's going, just personally.
Yeah. Now, I think, um, I think maybe when we come back, if, if the board do continue this, is not leaving a house comment is way down towards Jonesville. It's not, it's, it's, like they said, it's channel is re, channel, channel, um.
Carlton Point.
Carlton Point, mhm.
Which is a different stream altogether, right? I think, I think they're nodding their head. This doesn't have anything to do with them not leaving home. I think that was just from a past.
No, I understand, I understand that. But how can we say, when they start doing more construction, it's not gonna get worse? And, and I just think that if we could have some sort of, um, engineering assurances, if possible, it's, it's only if it's possible.
Any other, any other comments?
Well, I mean, we have regulations in place that are supposed to ensure that that doesn't happen. I don't know what happened in the past. It seems like if it's as bad as they say, and I have no reason to doubt it, there's action to be taken against that development, because they obviously didn't follow the regulations, and there's some, you know, opportunity there to, to get that corrected, if not a remuneration as well. Can we decide on this development based on past practices of a different development and a different developer? You know, that's everyone's call, but, um, you know, I don't think this developer should be tainted with some past practices of a different developer.
I, I think, I think you mentioned about the 55 and over, and I know a couple citizens have mentioned that. Now, um, I know you work on that 55 and over group. It's my understanding there's a need, whether these people would use it or not, my understanding there's a need for that, for Roseville. Our community is growing age and that type of thing. Is that?
Yeah, well over 20% of our population are senior citizens. So there's a, there's a huge contingent of our population. And my understanding from the presentation is, it's not, and never was intended to be affordable housing. It's age-restricted housing, and the two are very different.
And maybe, um, maybe as a follow-up to Linwood's question to better educate us, we, are we the only town that doesn't have a 55 and over community? Do we know that?
Don't, I, there's plenty that do. I don't know if we're the only one that does not.
I'd like to know as much, get as much education about that 55. I'd like to know as much, get as much education about that 55 and older. To your point, not age restriction of affordable housing, that is very two different things. But I'm thinking of just the traffic as well as how we are wording it that's going out to the community. And most people here 55 and older, they're immediately going to think price to me. And so I want to make sure that when we make this clear, that to our community, they're very clear about what the, what our community is and what it looks like, and that it's in line with other ones. You know, I don't want us to be a lone star on that.
Yeah. So you got your assignment if we vote on this, David? Any other, any other questions before we vote on it? You got, you got what's being asked?
The applicant certainly has an opportunity to answer those questions, I assume.
But from your perspective?
I'd leave that to the applicant and to the staff if there's a way to answer these questions at the zoning level. If there is, what we normally see in these circumstances is solving commissioners' concerns with zoning conditions. And here, you have very few zoning conditions. It's a, it's pretty short because much is being left to the site plan process, which is, which is a staff LDO process.
Any other comments? All right. Well, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of, I think it was number four, Linwood, is that what you said?
That is correct.
I think been a motion and a second on number four, all in favor, so I.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
And we'll need a follow-up motion with that date. Is that going to come back at your next business meeting, or will this require more time?
That's up to you. When can we bring it back?
We can, we can confer with the applicant, the recommendations for the business meeting. But we can follow up with an update to you all.
We'll need to do it now in the open meeting, or we'll be advertising and restarting this process.
Next meeting. Yeah, the business meeting will be sufficient. The next meeting will be the business meeting.
And that's November the fifth.
It'll be the third of November.
November the what?
The third.
November the third.
Right. No, 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 it's fifth, fifth, sorry, that's Sunday.
That might be a church.
Not the fifth.
No, not the fifth, that's election day.
Sixth, right. We, I will have to check with the town clerk about the date of the next meeting because to my knowledge, it's November the fifth. I think we typically shift to the sixth.
Huh?
I'll check.
Yeah, we need, we need a date.
Yeah. It was on the agenda as November the fifth, but that date was subject to change due to the election.
The next, the next, the next regular business meeting of the board.
First business meeting.
Is a date certain, date and time.
All right. Well, thank you.
November the fifth. It's the fifth.
Yeah. Thank you, Merton. And maybe, maybe it benefit, well, we won't have another work session before now. I was going to say, maybe it'll benefit getting some information to the board on affordable housing. I know you spoke on that one night in our workshop, I think.
Yes, and then at the.
Not affordable housing, but 55 and over.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you're familiar with the neighborhoods, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor Kern?
Yes.
This violates our agenda item, but with the idea that our next regular meeting per our calendar is election night currently, is there an interest in the board in taking up, moving our next regular meeting to another date?
Yes.
Yeah. Exactly sure how, I think we did that, but we did that last month for some reason. It ended up being.
Yes, so last month, we moved to another week.
Yeah.
Because national night was on that Monday night.
Right.
So I recommend we stay in the same week to keep a solid cadence.
Wednesday.
And so that Wednesday would be, I guess, an opportune time.
Wednesday or Thursday?
The sixth, Wednesday the sixth.
Can't do Wednesday, sir.
Right. Church.
Seventh. Would that work?
Thursday.
Seventh, 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 seventh.
All right, I need a motion.
The only thing I will look back to our planning director to ensure that no legal notices have gone out to have folks here on the fifth yet.
I need a motion to move the meeting to the seventh. So move. Or the second?
Second.
For the Scarborough case.
Has been noticed?
Yes.
Okay. So the Scarborough rezoning case has been noticed for a public hearing on the fifth. Staff's going to post that to change that the town has moved the regular meeting to the seventh, and we'll deal with the legal requirements for doing that.
So we don't have 10 days to make that change?
It, it'll have, we'll, we can make it work.
Yeah. The fifth?
No.
The seventh. We will make the seventh work, but it is a, it's now a to-do item that needs to be jumped on. Yep.
Yeah, I was thinking 10 days, how long you got 10 days?
10, 10 days from the initial notice, but once it's been noticed, it can be changed through appropriate notice.
Got you. Okay. All right, we got a motion on the floor to change to November the seventh due to election night on the fifth. Is there, I got a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay, I think we did adjustment to the agenda, and we move in affordable housing development, RFP upped. So, Michael, you up next? So thank you much.
Good evening, everyone. And tonight, we just wanted to take a few minutes, so just some background on this item. We, staff had developed a request for proposals for an affordable housing project on the six and a half acres right behind us here, right behind Town Hall. That's town-owned property. And we posted that in September and received proposals in response to that. The deadline for that was October 4th, and we received seven proposals overall from different affordable housing developers, kind of proposing different concepts and different ideas. And that, that RFP is actually in your packets, if you want to look through that. What we kind of wanted to do tonight is gain some guidance before, so the next step for us would be to review these proposals and kind of evaluate them, rank them, score them, and, and then kind of come up with and determine a developer that the town might want to work with. Well, we can do that right now, staff can, but the, the concern was maybe, well, we can, you know, rank somebody high that maybe the town board thinks is not as great of a project, or we can rank somebody low that maybe the town board wanted to see. So I put some discussion questions in the, in my memo there for tonight, and we can kind of do that, or ultimately, I think, staff in the, in the review team, which will be the, the team we already have set up right now currently for the affordable housing plan. We have a committee that's overseeing that, and Commissioner Sneed and the mayor on that team. We were going to use that group to be the evaluation team for these proposals. That involves planning department members, myself, and we've also invited Mark Pearlman, who's with the Wake County Division that oversees affordable housing, and he's with us tonight in case there's any technical questions that maybe I can't answer. He's a subject matter expert. And, but before we kind of did that, we just wanted to kind of get some guidance and some input from the board maybe on what everybody would like to see there. And ultimately, you know, are there, was there anything that you definitely don't want to see? As we're looking through these seven proposals, are there any deal breakers? You know, you don't want to see this? Or is there any, are there any must haves? Like, we definitely want to see this no matter what. And, and we kind of just don't have that guidance yet. We're going to evaluate the proposals based on, you know, a number of different criteria that has to do with familiarity and knowledge of North, of doing this kind of thing in North Carolina and even Wake County, the developer's qualifications, their relevant project experience, past successes, maybe in North Carolina, and, and just their overall approach to the project, their understanding of what we want to see there, and then also their kind of vision and their concept planned for this, this six and a half acres. So I guess, you know, one question would be how, you know, so the plan would be that staff in this committee, this Affordable Housing Committee, would take another couple weeks here to review these seven proposals and bring back and rank them and score them and maybe bring back the top two or top three to present to the board. Or, you know, I don't know if there'd be an interest in seeing all seven and having a session where the board gets to see all seven. Or would you like to designate, you know, right now, as I said, Commissioner Sneed and the mayor are on this committee already.
What about a summary of the seven?
Okay.
If we could just get something like that, just an overview.
Yeah.
I don't need the whole packet, but I mean, if it's something that's, are there any of the seven that don't make sense at all right now?
I've just kind of gleaned through them really initially, so I don't know yet.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think everybody should probably have eyes on it first just to make sure we're not missing something.
And I think the committee is a great idea because it has the, it consists of the consultants that sit on it. And they, this is what they do.
Yep.
And they have looked at Roseville, and I think they had some ideas possibly for that area or some thoughts about that area.
Yes.
So I personally think that is a great committee to take a look at it, at them.
Just where we saw about the citizens being added.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be engaging certain, some residents in the Barrington community to ensure we get their input because due to its proximity to that community, we know that they will have some questions. So the mayor had, has previously worked with that community and offered up a few names, and so we'll start with those residents and span out if they're not available or if we feel like it doesn't capture enough of the perspective of that community.
Yeah, I don't, being as close, a close proximity to them back here, I don't think we can exclude without them.
Right.
We'll have something like we did tonight, you know? We really need to get them in front of the, of the idea before, before we get too far down the road.
Yeah.
Because this is something different, just like the 55 and over community is something different. This is a different type of thing, and we just need to get the citizens involved in it before it gets too far.
So one thing, I realize that the question that Michael asked is a bit ambiguous, and some of you don't want to say certain things, but I'd like to hear each one of your feedback, in all honesty. And so the, the purpose of this is to get a better understanding of your vision so that we can bring up kind of like a prioritized list. And so if there's something that you're saying I'm against, but you see a proposal that convinces you otherwise, you can definitely course correct that later. We don't want you to, we don't want you to think that what you say right now is, is law because all the world, only thing we'll do is just review those things, prioritize them, and bring them back to you and say, based off what you have said. We have our own kind of internal things that we've gleaned from our past conversations about, like specifically affordable housing. So we know that internally, staff-wise, it will be very hard for us to stand up a human services or affordable housing program. And so we are thinking in our minds that if someone comes forth with a proposal and they're partnered with an organization to help provide ongoing support, that's, that would incentivize that idea for us as staff. So it's more so some of these conceptual ideas you may have heard about or things that have kind of pinged you as a, not a red flag, that's a bad word, but things that could be a con to think about that we're asking you for. We know that we are, we know that we have a veteran population, we know that we have a senior population, an aging community, and so we know that, all right? We know that work, workforce housing has been a topic. And so maybe it's not necessarily restricted by income or age, but it's by profession. So if you are a teacher or, or if you do work in a certain proximity to the area. So those are things that we're thinking about creatively to kind of shape our lens as we review them. But if there's anything that comes to mind, you can feel free to state it now and shoot us an email. Well, we would like to hear from each one of you since you all kind of make up that shared vision. We don't want it to happen or be reviewed in kind of the, the vacuum of the committee. We still want to make sure that we're getting as much traction as possible to bring back the proposals to you.
I definitely like the idea, sir, of what you were just saying about workforce housing, making it affordable because we still have some of our teachers that can't even afford to live in Roseville.
Right.
Some of our law enforcement, and it's sad. So anything that we can do as a board, as a town, to make it happen to where our workforce can live, play, shop, everything here in town, is definitely a great start. So definitely bringing this to our attention so we do something about it and be proactive, being reactive, good decision I never made.
So the Granite neighbor apartments are workforce housing apartments? And from what I understand before, I'm not sure what the waitlist is now, but they used to have a waitlist of over a year out for people wanting to, needing somewhere to live. So I think, for starters, workforce is a great idea.
100% agree. Well, I think also the biggest thing is too, is like, you're probably never going to get this opportunity again of land that you don't have your pressure on.
Yeah.
Like, you can do the right thing with this. Like, we don't need to, we need to make sure we do the best and thing we can with this land because, I mean, anybody can bring a development along, but this is our chance to actually do something with land we own, so.
Right. And I like, that's why I'm interested to see what was submitted because I'm sure there are things that I would have thought, I never would have thought about that, you know, that may be in that packet, hopefully. So I'm excited to see what was submitted.
Yeah. So do you know if they were submitted as affordable ownership properties or affordable rental properties or, you know, because that may be a concept we want to, you know, maybe, maybe we're asking the board to give that direction or something like that.
I'm sure that's represented, their models are spoken in the, in the proposals. So when we do review them, I'm sure we'll find out whether it's going to be an ownership model or a rental model.
Well, so it could be either one, the way it was, RFP was done, right?
Right. We, we did leave the RFP sort of vague on purpose just to kind of get everything and anything, you know? And with this being our first time to kind of jump into this realm, we wanted to see what would come forward, so.
I like the signature design.
And.
See what we get there.
We have, you know, for, if you will, entry-level habitation, we have apartments everywhere. I mean, I think there's 7,000 or more in Wake Forest alone. We have a senior affordable housing development here in Granite Falls, I guess, the Grande. We had an issue there, it was rentals, and we had a number of our tenants, residents displaced because the owners raised the rents, seemed like a little higher than they should have been, you know, 40% higher or more. So affordability is an issue. We have a huge senior community that, like I said, we saw a number of people displaced there. Ownership makes a lot more sense because you can better control the monthly costs, whereas rentals, you're subject to the owners of what they will do. And I think the town has a unique opportunity here by owning the land to be able to control what goes there and how it's, how it's utilized for potentially generations to come if it's done right, so.
Question for you, sir. Does the developers for this land, do they have any guidance as in they can develop townhomes or duplexes, or they trying to do a mister, or they throwing out several designs?
Yeah, just from my initial glance, it looks like there's some proposals that have proposed townhomes. I think there was single family in there or duplexes, and even, I think, one or two proposals had, you know, a single building with multiple units, so.
No tiny homes, huh?
I don't think so.
I mean, I don't know if, this is, might be a hard question to.
I think there was single family in there or duplexes, and even, I think, one or two proposals had, you know, a single building with multiple units, so.
No tiny homes, huh?
I don't think so.
I mean, I don't know if, this might be a hard question to define or even answer. Do they roughly give, how many homes they could put in the area?
Yes, definitely.
What was that? Did I miss that?
It varied.
What did you see mostly?
I'd have to go back and look, I just, just initially, I'm just looking at it visually and looking at the buildings, but I can't tell you the units that were in some of those buildings. But that, that's something when we do present back to the board, it'll show the density of, you know, this is a single building with 100 rental units inside, or here's 20 duplexes that are separate and detached. So there's different kind of concepts that we've received that we'll definitely be able to share, yeah.
Last question.
Yep.
I thought about it, with our seniors, because we don't know who is going to be occupying, but also have the developers look at building something with people with disabilities. You may have some people in wheelchairs that maybe live there with certain type of ADA.
Yep, I think that, that was some, that was one of the things we did put in our RFP to be considered, so I think as we look through the, each proposal, we'll see how they've addressed that to some extent.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Would the, would the board want to give any guidance to the staff with regard to whether the board is more interested in the 60% or 80% AMI level? Because that will make a difference to the developer and to the town with regard to how you can legally structure our conveyance. So 60% of the area median income or 80% of the area median income as being the targets for the, for the housing that you're developing. Different programs authorize for the development community those two levels and go into the statutes that allow housing authorities, which is essentially what we have become in this sort of a setting, to use. So I didn't know, I heard workforce housing, which I usually think of as the higher of those two numbers. Is there any guidance for the staff on that thought?
I think that's a, that's something that I would need to consider a little bit more than just a decision right now off the top of my head without sitting down, looking at it and thinking about it.
My guess is that the development RFPs will have selected for themselves which, which box they like to be in, but that would go into how the staff might rank them if they were looking to be able to make opportunities for the very low income versus the moderately low income.
And if it's a senior community, it would be the lower, and, you know, then it's determination by, by this board where the greatest need is, you know? I think that's a seminal determination is whether we're looking at, you know, affordable housing as a generic or senior affordable housing, you know, there's very big difference between the two.
That's true, because at the Grande, they have 30% and 60%, but question, just to give all of us some explanation, can you define the difference in between those 30, 60, and 80%?
I can't, I'm, I'm not an expert, I don't know if Mark would be able to help a little bit. And we, you know, one of the things we could do is maybe plan to come back at the next November work session with some of the answers to these questions.
Yes.
As we're presenting maybe summaries of the seven proposals, and then a lot of these technical questions can get answered just to help us to make a more informed decision.
I agree with that.
But yeah, I think, I think we're going to rely a lot on Wake County and their expertise in this, in this realm too, so they'll, they're, they've offered their help, and so they'll be participating with us, so.
All of the numbers in Wake County are higher than you think they are. That's the first thing to know. A family of four, 80% is $98,000.
Wow.
That's the March 2024.
Wow.
Wow.
That seems awesome.
I'm always shocked whenever I look.
Yeah, yeah.
Guaranteed every time.
Yeah, I think, I think the recent number I heard on Habitat is like three, over $300,000 a house. See some nods there.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not right.
Yeah, that's why they don't do houses no more, they're doing like duplexes.
Yep.
Townhouses or something.
That makes sense.
Because, you know, it's all has to do with land.
Yeah, and the market.
You know, when it's $100,000 an acre here.
The harder the land, the less, the less house you get.
The what?
I said, the more expensive the land, the less home you get.
Yeah.
And one other item I just wanted to bring up to everybody's attention, the adjacent veterinarian, veterinarian hospital, so the owner has, has reached out to me over the years and just has kind of asked about this property, and, and so he submitted a letter for your consideration. So that might be something we want to, or the town would want to think about as we look at future development of this property, just considering his, his request, or I don't know if there's a mechanism where if we do have an affordable housing development there and convey the land, if there's any way to kind of encourage that.
Certainly easier if the town retains ownership.
Right, yep, so.
Has he, he stated a portion of the land? Has he stated how much land that he's interested in?
Yeah, I think very little, around maybe a half an acre, two an acre, I believe, maybe less. I think the interest there is just that he's doing well, would like to expand and needs more parking.
Yes.
And of course, that road there kind of going into the parking lot is a gravel road right now. So if there was a, I think there's an interest in gaining more parking spots and, and even expanding that building there a little bit, but.
Very good.
But I, yeah, give or take around a half an acre, I think.
If we carve out, say, a half acre like, like Michael described, and we, that would be subject to upset being whatever he puts in for, wouldn't it?
Correct. Unless the statute applies, anyone to whom we would sell our real property or any other asset would need to be sold at fair market value, and there's a number of different ways that that can be worked out. If I remember correctly, when this individual first made an offer or first inquired as to whether there might be a possibility, the board was not interested as it could compromise the marketability of the remainder, which is unknowable in the abstract. It's possible you'll know more in the, in the future, but yes, the, whoever, whoever buys, unless there is a, an exception, would need to, would need to pay fair market value as calculated by the statute.
But in this new concept that we're working on, we're not, we're not selling it. Not, we're not marketing it for sale, so, you know.
Correct, so the same rules apply, however. So unless the statute applies, you could sell it to someone who wanted to develop it as affordable, age-restricted housing, if they wanted to pay that much for that, that's how much, that's what the fair market value is. So the structure that is discussed quite often is that the fair market value of land that has been restricted by land, by, by property restrictions such that it can only be used for age-restricted, income-restricted housing, that land is now worthless, but that amount would need to be paid.
Okay.
So 6.48 acres, if the 0.48 is reserved for to sell.
Could be.
Could be potentially sold to them, then this deal gives us 6 acres, can we just throw those those?
Yeah. In the, in the question, you know, how, if that part of what is desired there by the vet, veterinarian is more valuable or less valuable, is suitable for development or not?
Exactly.
Does it play into the ability of a future developer to develop that land? Of that 6.5 acres, probably not all of it maybe is suitable for development because of the topography out there, so, and, and we'll see that when we look at these proposals, how they've kind of laid out their buildings and preserved some open space in different places. So something to consider as well, that it might be a very valuable piece of the, the entire property that then is a deal breaker for somebody looking to do the development.
Right.
Because they might really need that half acre, for instance, but.
Yeah.
We, we just don't know yet, I guess. I think if the town manager agrees as well, we can plan to bring this to the next work session, present a summary of the, the seven, and then kind of the committee's recommendations or just some key highlights of everything, and then hopefully be able to have experts here too to answer some of those different questions about the 60% AMI and the 80%. Yeah, I did hear from one developer that wasn't able to apply or chose not to respond because it, it didn't work for their pro forma and their feasibility study. They said that it would have to be really high density and then also take advantage of some grant money or other funds that the state makes available or the county makes available. So that's a consideration too, where I don't know if there's an ask like that yet in any of those seven, but there might be an ask of either the land needs to be given to them for a dollar or made kind of like a donation, or Wake County would need to participate and help out in some way with some funding, so, but we'll, we'll have that information too at the next time.
So can we do that a little bit different? Can you give us the summaries soon?
Yeah.
And we, because I know it's going to happen. There's going to be that one outlier that somebody says, what about this one? Why aren't we talking about this one? And then we'll have to go through this whole process again. I'd rather just.
Yeah.
Get it out of the way, and then we, you know, we should be, we should get back to you quickly, tell us a deadline.
Okay.
And then we'll, you can give it to your committee and look at it, and that way we're back and everything, because I don't want to, there's always that one, like I said, so I don't want to do this over and over and over again, so.
Right, okay. So, yeah, we'll plan to get the summaries to you hopefully in a week, and then get your feedback and input and take that to the committee.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Next item is Rosewood Downfit Town Downtown Development Association report.
Hi, Sheila Sutton, I'm back again. I didn't know I was going to get the comment, so that worked out beautifully. I am here tonight to share with you all, hello again, board, mayor, staff, and community. I'm here to share about our downtown Roseville, Roseville Downtown Development Association. Want to give you guys an update. This organization's been around for not quite a year yet, we're almost toddlers. So I wanted to give the board an update as to what we're working on, what we've been working on. And one slide I forgot to include, I will put the agenda up there, but I want to talk about our purpose, because I want to make sure that the community understands why we exist. So I'm going to read this to you briefly. The Downtown Development Association is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that seeks to attract new businesses, support existing ones, and work with local stakeholders on marketing, beautification efforts, small business development, and organizing activities and special events to help create a sense of place in the heart of Roseville. And I want to correct something on that, some of the chambers missions is in there, because we are focused on not so much helping the small businesses, that's the chambers' role, our role really is to attract development to Roseville. So our mission has been updated. So that was a little outdated that I read, apologize for that. So what I'm going to talk about tonight is, I want to introduce our board, the ones that are here tonight with me, talk about our organizational structure and what we've been doing this year. This has been our year of establishment. We're going to talk about some achievements, our current efforts, and then looking at 2025 and beyond. And please stop me if you have questions, although I like to get through the presentation, I do not mind being interrupted or being asked questions throughout, because I know we forget our questions sometimes. So who are we? I want to start with, we have a logo. So this is our logo, Roseville Downtown Development, we established in 2023, again, we're toddlers. So that's our logo, and we do have a Facebook page, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but I wanted to highlight that, and I'll bring it up again. So I'll start by introducing myself, Sheila Sutton, I am the current president of the group. Catherine Presley Van Vuren is the vice president, she was here earlier, she had to step out for a work call. Michael Ely, which all of you probably know, he is the pastor of New Bethel here in town, he's our treasurer. We do have pending an assistant treasurer coming on board, so I'm not going to announce that person just yet, because our board doesn't know yet. Murray Hathcock, he is the owner of the Taekwondo studio here in town, and he serves as our secretary currently. Kathy Bat's another business owner, is our assistant secretary, and she owns one of the monument companies here in town. Luther Williams, and I'll ask you to stand if you are here, Mr. Luther Williams is our committee chair, yes, stand Luther, for Economic Vitality, thank you for being here, appreciate that. Sherry Bauer is the committee chair for marketing, thank you, Sherry, for being here. And we also have a couple of our committee members here I want to mention for our appearance committee, we have Ms. Regina Moore, if you will stand, Ms. Regina, thank you for being here, and Angela Harris as well is here from the board. Did I miss anybody? I think I got everyone. Okay, perfect. And of course, Michael McFarlane is our Superman. He does so much with us and for us, and we work a lot in partnership with Michael, who's the town's economic development manager, community and economic development director is what I call him. Tony Kenyon is our current Roseville Chamber liaison, and Michael Paul serves as a liaison from the board. And of course, Mayor Ronnie Curran is a part of our board as well, and he, he is there in his position as mayor, and he will be there. Thank you all for your support. So as I mentioned earlier, this was an establishment year. So what we've been focused on is filling out our board to make sure we have our offices in place as well as our committees. We do have pretty much a full board, except for the assistant treasurer that is coming on board soon. We also have three committees. I mentioned the economic development, actually it's economic vitality, I struggle with that name. I mention that at every meeting, I don't like that name. Economic Vitality Committee, we have our marketing committee, and we also have our appearance committee, so those are the three committees we currently have. We've also focused on having our organizational documents in place. We've established our bylaws, we have our notes that we have from each meeting so that if folks want to find out information about us, we have that available for them. We also have our officers outlined as to their duties and their roles, as well as our committees, so that's all established for our organization. We've been focused on marketing, you saw our logo, our beautiful logo has been established. We also have a Facebook page, and we also have a town webpage, and I'm going to have Michael talk about that a little bit later, and some business cards, he'll share about that later. But we also established a bank account, obviously we need that. We have a bank account established and a process for spending money and for getting reimbursed if you do spend money. And I'll talk a little bit more about the treasury later. So what have we been doing? So I'm just going to go quarter by quarter. So first quarter, as you all may recall, the end of January, beginning of February, we had an event here where we did kind of a developer open house, where we invited several developers to come out so the community could get to know who we are as an organization and what we're doing and why we're here, as well as meet some of the developers and hear what they want to do in Roseville, just to hear their heart. So that's very good. This group is really focused on relationship with developers. So that's our sole focus, is to establish those relationships and expand those relationships and to meet new developers. I know a lot of people all over the county, so we're going to be bringing in more and more folks. Second quarter, we spent some time at the new cobblestone development. We got to tour, we got to see the businesses that are coming and the areas that are laid out, as well as the apartments. I don't know if, I'm sure you all have explored that, but we love that apartment that overlooks the courtyard, the big, big one, so everybody was trying to rent that one, so we were all writing down the address, what's the address going to be? So we wanted that, even though it was upstairs, we'll deal with the stairs for that big apartment. So, and then third quarter, we spent some time with one of the developers, did some personal time with him. Robert Scharr came and sat with us during our board meeting, and he shared kind of his vision for Glow on Main and got our thoughts as well. So that was a great opportunity. Some other things I'm going to talk about is the facade grant program, we want to kick that off in 2025, more to come on the next slide, or next couple of slides on that. And then we're also working with planning on downtown signage. We want to designate Roseville to have specific signage that designates that you're in downtown Roseville, just like when you go to downtown Raleigh, you see the signs that they have out there. We want to make sure that we have specific signage for downtown. And then, of course, fourth quarter, we're here giving you an update on what we're doing. And of course, hopefully we'll participate with the town in partnership for the Fall Festival this weekend, whoever can participate. I will be out of town, I will not be there, but hopefully we'll have a couple of members out there. And then one of us, possibly me, will be doing an update on the mayor's Facebook show coming up in December. So as you see, we have a lot going on, and I want to emphasize, this is a volunteer board, we are a nonprofit, nobody gets paid, there is no dollars. So these people. So these people are working out of the goodness of their heart, so cheers to them. Let's give our board a hand. Some of you may know I was a cheerleader, so I'm going to get you involved. So I mentioned the facade grant program. I'm excited about this. Michael and I have kind of kicked this around for a couple of years, talking about this facade grant program. I think it's so important to make sure that your downtown looks like a place where people want to be and want to go. And the more you take care of what it looks like, just like your house, people will take better care of you. Cut your grass, people won't throw trash in your yard. If you don't cut your grass, they probably will. So this is specifically for downtown Roseville businesses. It's going to be a matching program and it's a reimbursement program. So 50% of the cost would come from the business owner, 25% will come from us, the RDDA, and I'll talk about how we get that funding. And then 25% will come from you all, the town of Roseville. We want to do awards twice a year and the approving board, this is still being decided. The approving board will either be the RDDA or the Town of Roseville Advisory Board. One of the boards, Parks and Rec, are planning. We'll bring a proposal to you all with a formal to get your input on that. Or it could be you all. You probably don't want the extra work, but anyway, those are options for approving. And so what it's going to cover, this is not all of it, but this is some of it, landscaping, lighting, signs, fresh coat of paint and permanent signage, so not your temporary signage, not your sandwich boards, not those little flying, whatever those things are. Y'all know what I'm talking about. None of that, but permanent signage to help people upgrade their look and keep it fresh. And the goal is to start this program, the first offering in February 2025. So we have a pretty aggressive goal on getting this done. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our funding. So last year, when we came and asked for some money, y'all gave us some money. Thank y'all. Our organization must have a budget, obviously, to operate. The town graciously awarded us $10,000 kind of as seed money to get us kicked off last year. And we have been very frugal and we have not spent a lot of money, I am proud to say. We have a balance of $9,400, so we've only spent $600. And we spent that wisely because two of our leaders went to conferences with that. We did an open house and paid for that. We did business cards and then some printing costs. So what we're doing is we're going to start seeking donations. We're putting together a membership kind of donation. You all are familiar with how the chamber does their membership, so you may pay 100, 200, $400 a year. We're doing, starting at $5,000, we want people to partner with us. So we want people to be builders in the community. So we'll have different levels of building the community. Remember, we're a nonprofit, so the incentive is whatever they give us, they get to write off. So I think that developers and others will be more than happy to donate to this organization because it is a nonprofit. So we're going to be seeking for this year at least $10,000 in donation to pretty much double our budget for the year. And with that money, then we can fund those programs like the facade grant program. And we're looking at membership fees if we want to have some type of membership fees. Don't know if that's feasible, but we're trying to figure out if we want to have that because we have been asked, especially by realtors, to join us. So we'll be looking at if we want to have that in the future, but that's definitely something we'll be exploring. But we're going to raise some money so that we can give some money to our businesses to help them. And I think we've already had some inquiries about the program from a couple of businesses. They heard through the grapevine, so they're ready, which I love. So looking ahead, 2025 and beyond, we want to continue to develop our organizational leaders. So leaders will change out. Again, this is volunteerism, just like our chambers. You have to continually nourish and coach and make sure you have good leaders leading your organization. And there will be some change out because a lot of the folks that are involved are business owners and they may not have time to continue on the board. When we first started this, kind of keeping people up to date on what was going on on Main Street, I think we had about 50 to 70 people on the list. And I had a lot of people said, I love what you're doing, but I can't, I can't put anymore on my plate, right? So we will continue to recruit and broaden our leaderships to make sure that we have the folks that we need to run the organization. And we want to continue to broaden our reach to developers in the area, not just in Roseville, obviously, not just in Wake County. There's developers all over. And then raising money for nonprofit, I already talked about that. And of course, we'll continue to get the town support because we need your support and we consider you all a partner. We're here to partner with you to help you carry out your vision and your mission for this town. So I'd already talked about some of the things we're going to do. I'm just going to highlight them. The facade grant program, marketing, you know, partnership with the town. What we've established for this year is that we've created a marketing team. We do have Sherry that leads the marketing committee. We are partnering with the town's communication person to do some marketing as well. So I'm excited about that. And a lot of the stuff that we do overlaps, so it makes sense to create literature that we we can share because we're sharing kind of the same message. Fundraising, I already talked about that. And I want to back up and talk about appearance committee. The appearance committee currently does not have a leader. I have pseudo been leading it, myself and Catherine. What I see this in the future being is something that could go under either the Parks and Rec board or the planning board, and I'm going to bring a proposal to you all. Because I do think planning does a fantastic job. The planning board does a fantastic job of looking at specs. But also when you're looking at specs, I think you should have appearance in mind for how things are going to look so that your downtown is intentional and you don't end up with stuff that you don't want. I go to towns a lot of times and I go, what happened, right? And that's not what you want. You want to create that sense of place and it looks intentional and you kind of bring people along. So expect a future proposal about that. And then the other thing I want to talk about is advisors and succession. We have to have a succession plan because, like I said, officers are going to change roles. I myself committed to a year of this. I'm not jumping ship, but I do foresee that I will move into more of an advisory role in the future. Probably not 2025, but definitely 2026 unless they they kick me out or you all kick me out. But we are going to look at that, so we will have a new advisory role eventually and then someone else obviously will succeed as president. But we definitely need to keep that strength and that leadership, as you all know, from being on different boards. So we continue to recruit volunteers, so I'm saying this so the public hears it. We're always building our organization and we're always looking for good volunteers that want to be a part. This is a great opportunity to develop your leadership skills, engage with Michael, who's an excellent person, and engage with the board and other committee members. So if you're looking at volunteering for something in the community, we would welcome you to join our committees. So just a few final thoughts. RDDA, Roseville Downtown Development Association, is a great organization to help enhance Roseville's downtown area because that's our focus. Our focus is simply downtown. We are not focused on all of Roseville. Roseville is going to grow and we know our scope is downtown, right? You guys are probably like, what's downtown? You know, I consider downtown from the museum down to the bypass. That's probably about it, right? So beyond that, it's somebody else's job, right? But that's what we're focused on. So we believe that a strong partnership with the town and the chamber is a must. It is an absolute must. And I just want you always to keep in mind that this is a volunteer board. So we're always recruiting and thank you all for your support. We will continue to do an annual town update yearly if you all want it that way or if you need it more often, just let us know. And I will stop because I can talk all night, so I'm going to stop and ask, what would you all like to see from us that either you haven't seen or that you're curious about? I welcome your questions.
So I'm curious to know what 2025 looks like. So what what will we see? Will we visually see anything that is a product of the RDDA?
Great question. I think the main thing you're going to see kickoff for 2025 is the facade grant program. So you'll see that actual program go into place. Those applications will go in and hopefully you'll see some work come out of that where people are improving based on the awards that they receive. So that will be one thing you'll definitely see. Other things you'll see, marketing tools, and I'm going to have Michael come up because I know you have some things to share about that. Some of the marketing tools that we have, you're going to see those in place. And I have my business cards and I left them in my purse, so I think Michael has, so yeah. Yes. Do you want to talk about the flyer and show them the page?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's some business cards coming around and if you scan that QR code, it goes to the Facebook page. So this has been a great group to work with this past year and Sheila is a great champion of our Main Street and downtown area. In a lot of towns, you'll see that they have a kind of a separate website for downtown development. If you look at, you know, Garner and Fuquay Arena, there there's some nice ones. Until we get to that point, until the the group develops a little bit more and maybe has some more budget for their own website. Candace, our communications specialist, has been helpful in creating just a downtown page that makes sense for us to have anyway on our town website. So you can go here to the business section of our website and then click downtown. And we've just kind of populated this with some, you know, things that are going on, the Main Street Vision Plan, of course, Main Street Project, where there's a link to that project website, information on the association. Main Street Park, of course, is one of our main assets in town, main amenities. A little bit of news here that recently took place and upcoming events. And and just some more information about what what's happening on Main Street. Of course, Cobblestone Village is coming soon, almost ready to open. Candace created this guide to Main Street for visitors and shoppers, kind of a little map here. And this is still in process, so this is kind of in draft format, but we'll we'll continue to improve this. And the idea being that we'll have, from this, we'll have brochures and printed materials as well for the for the group to hand out as need be.
I like that part right there.
Yeah.
That's good.
So something that this could be turned out into a brochure when we hand out at the chamber and in different events, so.
Stores to keep that in there. That is cute. I like that.
Yep. Just some of the main developments. We put something up here on Wallbrook. And then also Glow on Main is another big project we're hoping to see take place soon. I think we got a little bit of design sheets in there. And then ultimately, some information for developers that are looking to relocate here, so we'll we'll continue to populate this with with information that developers are interested in when they seek to locate to a to a town. Kind of what's what's here already, what's coming. Yeah, so and again, we can turn this into printed materials as well in the future. So that's how we're kind of partnering with the group on on marketing efforts, so.
And some of the questions that we get a lot of times is, it's one thing to have paper, which is fine. To have paper brochures, they get stale, right? So it's nice to have that QR code because we can also look to this page so they can have instant information as well. So those are some things that you are going to see in 2025. The facade grant program will be a big one. I'm looking forward to that. And then our marketing documents will be something else you'll see. And hopefully you'll you'll be meeting new developers that we're sending your way. Like, how do you know who we are? Oh, Downtown Development Center. So get ready. Get ready, get ready.
Very good.
Thank you, Michael. What other questions you all have?
Are you planning events to bring developers to Roseville?
Yes, that is our goal, is to have, hopefully when Cobblestone is open, even Wallbrook, so we can do some things. We're trying to partner with them as well to help with their kickoffs, to be there to welcome folks and invite folks and push folks out on our, push information on our social media as well. So that's something we definitely would love to do. And we've already spoken with Holly. I stay in close touch with Austin Williams, but definitely talked with Holly and she's like, yes, any promotion she welcomes and she's with Cobblestone. So yes, we'll be definitely doing that.
You mentioned that you guys are not in partnership with the chamber.
We are. We partner with the chamber.
And is there, how can we better partner with that, with you and that relationship as well?
I think it's some of the business stuff, kind of the, some of the events that they have, really just, our big focus for 2025 is getting our name out there. This year of 2024 was really establishing the organization, getting our documents in place, getting our face out there. But really, it's partnering with the chamber so that folks know who we are and what we do to make sure that it's definitive about what we're focused on versus what they're focused on. So I think having some joint events with them would be very helpful, going to some of their businesses. Is it expos that they do? It's something they do at the end of the month. I try to attend as much as those that we can, but to really introduce ourselves. And each time I go, Philip allows us to introduce ourselves and let us, let them know what we're doing.
Business After Hours.
After Hours, that's what it's called. Yes, it's the expos. Great question. But yes, they are definitely a partner. Sherry is a part of the chamber, so she is also liaison with us to the chamber as well as Tony Kenyon. Tony owns Consonity Health.
I know you guys are new. Do you have any opportunities yet for like volunteers from like, say, high school level and into the schools? Because I, I think back at always like the kids filling out stuff and they're always like, they want to stand out. I mean, this is something that would majorly stand out for them to show that they've been involved already.
I love that question. Were you in my head today? So the reason I said I love that question, really, I was thinking about that because when you think about technology, so I had a free headshot done at an event I went to last week and I went to the person and I said, even though I powdered my face, it's still shiny. Can you fix it? And he was like, you know, you could get like a 20 something year old to help you with this app and you won't have to pay me another $25. So I was like, ooh, thanks for the tip. So I was just thinking about that when I was thinking about the face app, but thinking about bringing on some younger folks. Even on this board, I've always said that we need a youth council to help bring in some great ideas. So yes, I was thinking about, talking to Philip about, can we partner with them on some of their youth stuff? And a component could be working with us. So great question. I was, truly, I was thinking about that today.
To, or to that, you know, you could also partner with Wake Tech right down the street to have an architectural school.
That's very true. Great idea.
That I think would be a good idea because that way you capture that young adult and make sure.
I would agree. Great idea. So yes, want to spread our wings. So the more ideas you have, we welcome them. This this group is truly here to help the town, to help Michael, to help the community, so we welcome your ideas. So the more, the merrier. Appreciate it.
With our economic development feasibility study, how can that assist your developer?
So truly, we haven't delved into that deeply. Our goal right now is building those relationships with developers. So hopefully, what will happen is we'll meet some developers that want to bring something to that area. I do know a couple of folks in Garner that have expressed some interest in coming to Roseville and I have them on my list to call. But hopefully, we can bring some developers that are interested in helping to develop that area. That's what I'd like to see more, more than just residential developers.
Yes, because once that has been identified with the study, it will be likely to have it in writing that that land is reserved and protected for commercial development only.
Exactly. That's our goal. We do approach developers and we do a lot to approach businesses too. So our goal, whenever we're out, we're out recruiting and talking to folks all the time. I was just somewhere. Where was I recently? And I was like, they're getting, they say, oh, I was at, are you all familiar with the Rapaculture? They used to have a food truck that came up here to the wine and beer over here.
Oh, yes, yes.
Rapaculture. They used to only have food trucks. Now they have a brick and mortar off Glenwood Avenue. So I was hungry the other night and I stopped in every time I'm over there. And I said, hey, have you guys thought about Roseville? And they said, actually, we're coming to Wake Forest. And I was like, no, you should come to Roseville. And they said, the owner lives in Wake Forest, so they already had a site identified. But some of it is just letting businesses know. It's marketing wherever you are, just sharing. We've been working on Prime and Nightdale too. He's he's watching us. Yes. So definitely, great question. What other questions can I answer for you all?
I'll just say, Sheila, you're doing a fantastic job. I get to see you through the whole year. You've been wonderful, Michael. Thank you for all you do, Luther, Sherry. Everyone, you know, like you said, it's a volunteer organization. It takes a lot of time and I see progress being made and I know it'll continue to do good things for our town. The facade program is going to be awesome and and you're going to help bring people to our town that wouldn't come otherwise. And that's what it's all about. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. Thank you all so much. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate your support and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Good. I go with Michael Paul. See, very good job. All of you, Michael, Sheila, Sherry, and the whole group. I mean, I tell you, all of you do a really, really good job and 2025 is going to be the the year that's going to take off, so.
And let me, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention planning and all that Meredith and her staff does. Tanner's here tonight. Thank you all so much for everything that they do. I know I bug them a lot, but they're open to our ideas and I appreciate what they're doing because I know they have their own workload and we just add to it, but we add good stuff, so thank them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thanks. Good report. Appreciate you all coming out and supporting Sheila with that report. Thank you very much. It's only one item left, but I think this is a pretty big one we've been waiting for. So I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess. Just to give a break, we've been going over two hours now. So by that clock right there, let's come back at 8:18. Thanks. We are in recess.
I'm going to call back to order the Roseville Commissioners Workshop Workshop Session, October 22nd. And we got one item left, which is Main Street Project Update. And who's doing the presentation? Is that you, Eric, or someone else?
It'll be myself and it'll be Josh from RK&amp;K.
Okay.
So I'll just kick it off. And thank you so much, Board, everyone who's here. It's a pleasure to bring forward and bring forward an update on the Main Street Project. The presentation that we'll do is going to go in a particular way. And so I'll start with kind of the why. The reason why it asked for the agenda to be shifted was that the Downtown Development Association and this Main Street Project both originated from the same idea, which is our Main Street Vision Plan and the Vision for the Future of Roseville. So I'll start with that and go over some aspects of that. And then I'll talk, I'll give a high level update over the financials of it. I think that's important for you all, since we've been spending quite a bit of money and it's an expensive project and we have a lot of stakeholders on that. And then we'll do the technical update on the project, which was will be when Josh transitions in to give updates on that. And we'll talk through where we are, some things that we've overcome with the project and next steps with it. And so the, the, as you know, the Main Street Vision Plan is just like the Main Street Project, is very, very robust. The Main Street Vision Plan was something that was initiated in 2017 and the community came together and drafted a plan to reclaim and revigorate the Main Street Corridor, essentially culminating in the plan that was approved in 2018 with overwhelming support from the community. Since Highway 401, it predominantly serves as a pass-through for automobile traffic traveling to and from the Triangle area. And so the goal, but the goal of the Main Street Vision Plan was how do we reclaim this? And so after the establishment, establishment of the bypass, we started that journey. There were five core kind of principles that underpin, that underpin the Main Street Vision Plan, and that's modal choices being a priority. And so that's walking, biking, things of that nature, in addition to driving. Safety for all users was a critical factor. The third thing was using the best design practices to create access management and enhance connectivity with our down, within the downtown area. The fourth one was attractive design that would also support surrounding land uses. And lastly was qualitative development and redevelopment also needed to be supported with the plan. We engaged Campo with the Vision Plan and we received over $12 million for this project from them to help make that come, that vision come to life. A big parts of this plan, as you see, expands the whole corridor. And so not only, in addition to what we currently see and we're seeing work around on the Main and Young intersection, a big part of that was the realignment of the Burlington Mills Road at Main Street. Other things that are happening with it that we've made great progress on is the streetscape improvements, improved sidewalks, and then new crosswalks and curb and gutter throughout the corridor. And what we'll see in the latter phase when we start, when we have the resurfacing and restriping and realignment is an improvement of the bicycle transportation enhancements that you'll see. So those are things that will emerge from that. A majority of the work has been done with a certain sect of that money that was provided to us from the Americans, the Disabilities Act. So there are three pots of money that kind of support it. There's a portion that's not reimbursable and that's what we're, that's our technical skin in the game for that. And then there's the Campo money, then there's the DOT money, and then there's this American Disabilities Act money, which goes specifically towards the updating of the curb ramps throughout the corridor. And so a lot of those curb ramps, as you've seen, a majority of them outside of the ones that are located directly at the Main and Young intersection and the ones directly across from Town Hall have been completed. And so we've seen some improvements on that. Also, we've, we've made some plans, some changes in the plans that will make those crosswalks throughout that corridor high visibility. And so they'll kind of stand out at night because we anticipate people to be walking and navigating back and forth between what will be the future Walbrook location, all the way up to the Main and Young intersection, because those two developments sort of kind of bookend this project in a very succinct way. In addition to the 42 curb ramps throughout the project, we've partnered with Walbrook to develop a widen, for widening, medians, landscaping, and the, and a 10-foot multi-use path. Some of the photos, like do you see here on the screen, and the next one, they depict that future vision that we, that the community and this plan set forth. And in a meeting that we had in the field about two weeks ago, we, it was the, I believe it was maybe two days after Cobblestone had taken down the green fence, the construction fence, the privacy fence. And as we stood out there at the end of the meeting, I was like, I mentioned to the staff, I think Michael was there, and Candace and some others, that we look closer to this vision every single day. And so when that particular fence came down, the perspective that you see standing up there, you kind of see how this walkability and being able to come from the sidewalk directly into a storefront is getting closer and closer. Cobblestone is making great progress and you'll see that they're building out in that Building Three. And so they're expecting some of their tenants to start moving in in mid-November and then residents moving in by the end of this year as well. And so we'll start seeing more activity. So we're thankful for that. We've been pivoting in the project to pave in and pave in a sidewalk, a temporary sidewalk on that side, so that they can go ahead and start utilizing it as pedestrians as well in, in the last two days. And so these are things that we're taking, steps we're taking. But I just want to take a moment and just remind everyone of just the purpose of this project and the why behind it, because in the midst of some of the construction and detours and stuff, it kind of gets lost. This is a vision that initiated long before I arrived, and it's something that I believe is underpinned and supports the desire for the community for certain amenities. And when I say the community, I don't mean future growth and the people that might move here, but the people that already live here, that wanted to spend their time more in Roseville and seek out amenities that were close to those restaurants, breweries, bars, entertainment. And so this project is making that possible. And so I just wanted to take a second and highlight that. And then I also wanted to just look at the funding again. Again, the project represents over $20 million of investment with, into the Roseville community, and it's supported by funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. 57% is from federal transportation grant funding, that's about $12 million. 20% is from the developer Walbrook, and 23% is local town of Roseville funding. A project of this magnitude can only be executed by, through the help of our partners. And so this, that's Campo, who we met with and provided an update on the project two weeks ago. And so they're optimistic on that. And we've already started talking about future projects here in Roseville, Roseville with them, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Crawson Southeast, Fred Smith Company, RK&amp;K, and Stantec, who are, have representatives here. But also, as a small town, we have partners that often go unrecognized. And so I wanted to just highlight the fact that we, we work very closely with Wake County and the City of Raleigh as a merger community, specifically with City of Raleigh, you know, that we partner with them on our water and sewer. And then with Wake County, we partner with them on all things related to stormwater. And then even with the state of NCDQ. And so there are several other parties that we have to partner with. We partner with Wake Electric. We partner with Duke Energy, because some of you don't know that our, pretty much our Main Street just kind of splits, and to the right is Duke, and to the left is Wake Electric typically. And so these are people that we've had to work through to make this project possible. Before Josh kind of hops into the technical update, I just really want to thank him for that, because it takes a lot of expertise for us to kind of do what we want to do for it. And so as he transitioned to the technical update, where Josh should come forward, in general, this project is moving from like a current state to a future state, but there's a lot of history there. And so Josh will be showing some pictures on where, what the prior state of, what it looked like before, and then what it looks like now to kind of show progress to this point. And then one thing that I wanted to just mention is that in addition to the things you see above ground, there are a lot of things below ground that was a prior state that is moving to a future state that we've overcome with the project, even as we moved from the corridor, from the more southwest side up to the Main and Young intersection. And so we'll highlight some of those things in this presentation as he comes forward, but I just wanted to keep that up. And so again, just want to share more about that vision and where we kind of come from and the origins of the Downtown Development Association and also the project as a whole. And then that kind of gives a financial update. One thing I wanted to add about the financials quickly is that as of right now, the project is at 50, 56% completion, 56.02% to be exact. And our cost to date, we're tracking at about 60%, 59% of the funds have been used to date. And so the threshold for NCDOT for a project to be in a successful place is that that gap is less than 15%. And so if we're behind, then we're, if it's lower than behind, but if we're over, then it means we're trending. But we're trending very well with that despite some of the changes we've had to make in the field. And I wanted to address just a rumor mill comment. The project is not running out of money. We're in a very good position. We stay very in close contact with Campo. And so one thing that we've experienced with the project is that certain ideas have just come up about it. And I wanted to really state that very explicitly, that we're in a great position financially for the project and we don't have any concerns in and around that. And so I just wanted to do that, bring that to you. And so I'll pass it over to Josh and then RK&amp;K, Josh and Ben, RK&amp;K, and they'll go through some technical updates. And then after that, we'll just open technical updates, next steps, and then we'll open the floor to any questions that you have. We're encouraging anyone from the community that watches this, since it is a, it is a work session, not a business meeting, we don't have a public comment, to please use the email address, phone number. We'll be monitoring that if you have any questions. And ultimately, any question that we may not be able to answer for you tonight, we'll turn, we'll one, reply to you all directly, but turn it into an RFP of some sort and post it to the website and share it out via News Blast to kind of answer some of those themes that we see in questions in regards to the project.
So before we get started, can you introduce all of the guests you have? Because you got more than.
Yeah, I was, I was going to start off with the introductions.
All right. That'd be good.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board, and staff for letting us come and present. My name is Josh Dauphin. I'm with RK&amp;K. We do contract administration, CEI, and coordination with DOT for the project. This is Ben Henderson.
Hi. I assist Josh with all of his contract administration. And basically, we run meetings and work on getting submittals approved and, and stuff like that.
So we also have Ryland Height and Brian Keaton with Fred Smith Company, the contractor. And we also have Thomas Hoppy and Melvin Briggs, Stantec, who is the project's designers.
And one person I want to mention is Tris. In addition, so they, these are very humble men that are before us. They are our partners, our partners in making this project happen. We went through a very rigorous process, myself, the former manager, and Michael, and others, when we put out an RFP to do a selection. And so in addition to the construction engineering inspection and all those services, they also provide support on the communications front. And so Tris is not here tonight. He's a little under the weather, but that's one other person of the trio that we regularly partner with to make things around the project happen. And so I just wanted to thank him, because he's likely watching it from home now.
He wanted to be here, but he was a little sick. So we wanted to start off with the project update. We wanted to go over the sections of the project.
You have to hit the button. You have to press the button on that, that thing.
Sorry. There we go. So we want to start with the sections on the project, because the project is split into different quadrants. Like Eric was mentioning earlier, there's the Walbrook section, which goes from Jonesville to the new Burlington Mills. There's the new Burlington Mills to the old Burlington Mills section. There's the ADA improvements from there to School Street. And from Perry to Williams Street is the Main and Young improvements. So we just wanted to show you some stuff that we've already done with the project, because we've been working here for almost two years now. So the first section we worked on was the Jonesville Road intersection at Main Street. This picture was taken in March 2023. We have erosion control, clearing, grading, and other minor stuff to get ready for the Here's a picture from the same angle in September 2023. As you can see, some improvements, there's curb and gutter, there's some asphalt widening going on, there's stub outs for the new Walbrook development. And this was taken two weeks ago. We have a whole new traffic pattern, and then you can see the Walbrook development that's also going on on site. Next, we have the Burlington Mills road realignment. As you can see, they've started clearing, you can see a rough road going in. This is in March 2023. And next is September 2023. On this particular section, not much has gone on in the past couple of months, because we're pushing for the intersection to be complete. We are still anticipating that to be open summer of next year. And here's Main and Young. This is in March 2023. You can see the cobblestone development starting on the left. Here's Main and Young, July of this year. You can see where the road's been removed. And then here it is as well, two weeks ago, with the temporary traffic pattern that has the Main Street accessible. Next, as Eric said earlier, we know there's been some rumors, we know there's been some talk about the issues with the Main and Young. We just wanted to go over with everyone some of the issues that we've encountered. So the, one of the first issues that we encountered was storm drain outlet that goes toward Williams Street. You can see it on the markup here in orange. There are some issues with permitting for that particular run. And with that, we believe we should have it fixed, so that we have the proper paperwork, hopefully this week or next week. Next, we have Dominion, which is now in bridge. There was an existing gas line that ran through the intersection, and we had to get that relocated. And it's kind of hard to see on this drawing, but the solid yellow is what they were able to do before. And there's a dashed line between Susanna's Antiques and Young Street, and that's one of the areas that has not been complete, because we ran into some debris from the old gas station that used to be there, and we have to do some exploration to see what exactly is down there.
Okay.
So with that, there's a potential fuel tank in the area. We should have exploration going on within the next two weeks to see if it's just debris or an actual fuel tank. And from there, we will determine what action needs to be taken. And there's a little yellow where we think it is. So an issue we found that we overcame already was the old residence that was in the parking lot in the bottom-left corner. We also found contaminated soils in that area as well. And with that, it was mitigated per DOT, DEQ, and Wake County standards.
Contaminated from the gas station that was up there?
Um, we think we found an old fuel tank. We didn't dig out the whole area, but from talking to some people in the area, they think it was an old fuel tank that was used to heat a house that was there.
Thanks.
Question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So this will explain why, when there's no bodies on the ground working, there's logistics being done.
Yes, sir. There's, we have issues. We have to overcome them the proper way to make sure that they get handled. And if we run into a lot of utilities or other unknowns, we have to stop, discuss it, and see what we need to do to properly handle the area.
Is there a typical timeline for contaminated soil?
Um, usually, so once it's encountered, the work in the area stops. We have to reach out to DEQ to see how they want to handle it. They have to do some paperwork on their end to see if it's a known contaminated area, which if it is, it should have been marked on the plans, but this particular area was not. So now they have documentation that it is potentially contaminated in the area now. We have to get the material out of the ground, we have to take it to be tested, and then it has to go to a certified landfill that can accept contaminated material. And it doesn't have to be fuel or diesel. There's other items that consider it contaminated as well.
Yeah. And there's sort of, in this case, there was no physical container found.
Right.
So this one was a little bit more simple. The one that's holding us up, the, on the previous slide, near the Susanna's Antiques, we found a container, and we aren't exactly sure how big or the, the previous container, like the stuff that was in it, what, what is it really? So.
We're not sure if it's debris or if it's an actual gas tank that's in the ground from the old.
And it's safe to say you didn't see that prior to, it was something that was just happening along the way.
It was, it was not.
No. And so when they encountered the fuel tank, the, the only reason why we were able to determine it was a fuel tank was that one of the longtime residents, Mr. Edens, said it was a gas station there, and he had, his family had paid for that fuel tank to be removed. And so we've discovered that there is still a fuel tank there. And so part of that, a part of that exploration is determine how large it is and what it contains. At the temporary parking lot, we did do, as staff, we did do exploration before that, and we had a septic tank removed. And so we hired a company to remove a, a large septic tank, maybe like 20, 20 feet wide, I mean, 20 feet long, by 40 by 40. So we hired a contractor to do that, and it was abandoned, and we felt that it will be, would be sufficient. And so when they went in to do the parking lot adjacent to that area where we removed that septic tank, there was unfortunately, an underground fuel tank that was there. And so that fuel tank had been removed, but it was found that that soil was still contaminated from the presence of that fuel tank there. And so they're very, very strict on that, particularly especially when it's in proximity to residences and such. And so since that temporary parking lot is a parking lot, they were able to contain it and kind of encapsulate it. And so the future use of the area has a big impact on the regulations and how it needs to be disposed of and what we have to do to kind of clean it out. And so the temporary parking lot allowed us to move much faster. But with the gas tank, there is a gas line that runs past it, and there's storm drainage that also resides very close to it, and also water lines that are in that area as well. And so the presence of other utilities there makes it a little bit more complex. And so the, the solutioning that comes on their part, on telling us what we need to do with it, it just takes longer.
You also brought up a good point about what was around the contaminated soil. So in this case, there was a well that had been abandoned. That's one thing that DEQ checks on, is are there any underground water sources that people are using? And in this case, the well had been abandoned, the closest well within 150 feet had already been abandoned. We did some digging to track down the homeowner, and basically, everyone in the area is on city water. So it's not something that is affecting the, the people who live in the area or the businesses.
Yeah. But we can move along. We don't want to get too far in the weeds on it. But just to let you know that there's, anytime you discover something, there's a process that we have to rely on our partners to do, is highly regulated in, in the sense for the contaminated soils.
There's, there's a lot of entities in the area. It's the DOT roadway, we have City of Raleigh Utilities, there's DEQ. We just, we have to discuss and assess with each entity, depending on if it affects them or not. So next, we have a Ting fiber line that was recently installed before we started the project. It ran from the Privet Building down to the parking lot. This also caused us a small delay while they had to relocate it, because if they hadn't, it would have been about two feet above the driveway. We had a sewer service line relocation that needed to be done. This blocked storm drainage heading down East Young, right there in green. But we were able to work with the property owner and get that relocated, and the storm drainage has now been installed. Next, we have a cobblestone water line tie-in. So the two water line designs did not match up with each other. So what, Cobblestone has put in their water line three, four years ago, Eric?
Yes.
It's, it's been a while. And when we went to go install ours, it did not line up, so we had to get a redesign with City of Raleigh. As Ben said earlier, we find wells all the time. Usually, they're abandoned, but unfortunately, this time it was not. So we also have to abandon the well in front of the new cobblestone building right there. That will be done in the next few weeks, but we also have to follow Wake County and DEQ guidelines.
So is that in the road?
Um, it's actually next to the new sidewalk.
Hmm.
Yeah. That's going.
It's a very big deal. It's an 18 foot, it's 18 feet deep.
So it's in the right way?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
A new well, another well?
So we are working on getting that abandoned, but it will not be under new asphalt. And as we've been working through the area, the existing water line is old and brittle, and some of the areas are too close to the surface. Normal guidelines are three feet below the subgrade, and I know we found some that were much shallower than that. So as of lately, we've had six water leaks that had to be fixed by Fred Smith or City of Raleigh Utilities. And these are their approximate locations. So with that information, we worked with the City of Raleigh, the town of Roseville, and NCDOT, and we're going to be doing a new water line installation throughout the whole intersection. Here's a rough drawing. The blue lines are new water lines going in, the white lines are existing water lines that's going to be filled and capped once the new lines are in service. So as you can see, we've had, we've had a good number of issues that we were not aware of until we closed the intersection, because either they weren't on the plans, on the as-bills that have been going, that the town has and maintains, or they were in the wrong So now we're going to go up into future upcoming work. We've broken this up into two sections. The first section is for the intersection work. The main driver currently is the water line work. The underground utilities have to go in first before we can put anything on top of them. So we recently had a design approved by City of Raleigh Utilities. We're working with Fred Smith right now on price negotiations, because this is added work outside of their original bid. We're hoping to start it early next year, and then we'll work clockwise around the intersection. Once that's done, we'll work on the pavers, curb and gutter, flat work, other storm drainage that can go in. And then we'll be regrading the intersection, because the actual intersection is dropping anywhere from six inches to four feet, depending on where the original intersection was, to allow for water drainage. And then after that, we'll be working on the incidentals for the streetscaping, which includes. And then after that, we'll be working on the incidentals for the streetscaping, which includes benches, new lights, trash cans, trees, and other items. While that's going on, like we discussed earlier, we'll be working on the fuel tank exploration to figure out the limits of the contaminated material and if there's an actual tank or if it's just trash and debris that was buried a long time ago under the ground. Once we get that figured out, then Inbridge, which used to be called Dominion, will come back and finish their gas line.
So, so is the first one done there? You, you saying the design is approved?
Yes, sir. The design, City of Raleigh has approved the new design that Stan Tech provided to them.
So why are we waiting to early 2025 to do the work?
We're, we have to get submittals that DOT will approve. We're getting DOT to reimburse this work that's within the right of way. And with that, we have to make sure that the submittals are there and then we have to go through all the new pricing. They have to provide materials, equipment, certified payrolls for their laborers so that we can review everything that goes in.
Is that expedited early 2025?
That's right now. Um, we're anticipating the end of the week to start negotiating on those prices.
Has that changed, Eric? To starting next year?
We're hoping to start earlier, but.
Cause I was, I was thinking we were starting pretty soon on the water line replacement.
Yeah. So the approval, the approvals by NC DOT is the thing that we need to wait on. That was something I wasn't aware of when we had that conversation. I thought everyone that needed to approve it would be, would, would had already happened. And so that's, um, one approval. When it comes to expedite it, um, everything up to this point has been expedited. So when chatting with the City of Raleigh, um, they stated plainly, they said that if they knew that these water lines were in this condition, then they would have done a capital improvement project in advance of this project to, um, to replace all of those water lines. Had they known that that pipe was in that condition. But, um, as a merger community, um, one thing that a lot of us experience that are not in the City of Raleigh is that, um, capital improvement projects, um, lag behind and they come up on an as-needed basis. And so had there not been a catastrophic failure, um, then that project likely would not have been initiated. But what I can, what I can say is that, um, they've worked with us a lot. Typically a redesign and approval will be for six months. I had the conversation with the directive utilities and their assistant city manager and within a weekend, they had a proposed, option for us to move forward. And so what it took three months was like three days. And so they worked through the weekend and within a week and a half, we were able to solidify the plan and get that over to, um, Stan Tech for it to be, um, approved. The thing about the initiation of plans, um, we did a lot of pre-work of this design of the project as a whole that went through all these approvals and clearances so that we can finally like move forward. One thing that you all may or may not recall is that there was a span of about a year and some change where we were trying to get plans approved so we can get a green light to finally put it out to bid and get construction. And so any new addition to the project, especially of this magnitude, that's not just a field revision, has to go through all those kind of channels. But thankfully it's made it through, um, our local, our kind of like, I would, I say local partners, which is like non-state, um, City of Raleigh. And so DOT is doing those approvals now. And so that's the last leg before we can, we can move on it. A part of the conversation that we had too was whether or not we should move immediately or delay it just because of some of the impacts that construction might have on the holiday season. And so, it's kind of given a grace period in some areas. And so there's a pro to it, even though the con is we're having to wait to get someone approved. It'll, it'll help us, um, as far as the impact on local businesses to kind of give them more time to solidify their, um, to not impact the holiday traffic and such. And so in this, and also the, um, because it, we knew that this project will be extended, this work at the intersection will be extended because of the water lines. That's why we pivoted to do the temporary roadway to, um, provide for the traffic flow on Main Street as well. So we've expedited some parts, the parts that we can control to be able to alleviate some of the, you know, for lack of better words, headache that comes with, um, the emergence of the water line issue. But this particular one is something that DOT is committed to and they're working through it as fast as they can. And so hopefully we have those approvals soon.
So I have a question. So when those water lines are being laid, you talk about delaying, affecting the area businesses. Are more roads, I'm assuming more roads are going to have to be closed down in order to install, repair, whatever they're doing, those water lines. So is that going to cut off business, access to those businesses totally?
So, no, no, it's not going to be cut off totally. And so there will be intermittent, um, water shut offs just to do repairs and testing, but that's further out for us. The thing that I say impacting business is more of the aesthetic. So the dust, some of those water lines have to be laid deep. And so just proximity to some of those pedestrian areas, it'd be disruptive to foot traffic. Which is one thing that is important for their businesses, making sure foot traffic, because there'll be trenching and all those things that are required.
Y'all had conversations with the businesses?
Yeah, yeah. We meet with them, we meet with them bi-weekly. And so we have a meeting with them coming up this, this Thursday, next Thursday.
And they're aware of the, what is going to have to happen and that the road is not going to be opened?
Oh, no, what, which road?
Young.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they are aware. And so that's why we pivoted for the, so to, to backtrack, when we saw that this would be, um, an issue, we asked them, what, what can we do? They says, can you get Maine open? And we said, yes. And so we have Maine open. And so instead of digging down, which would impact those water lines, we had to build the road up in that temporary state. And so that's one thing that we've done through the conversation with them is to give that, be able to allow some traffic that can move through there. And so the thing that we're doing now was we won't be interrupting that north to south flow. Um, and there will be flow from north to south for the remaining of the construction, the intersection, instead of there being like a dead end, which was there. So we've had conversations with them. We'll have a conversation with them next week to figure out what we can do around that, around parking, things of that nature as well.
Okay, I have two more questions. As a community member, I want to know the answer to. Number one, the, these, um, gas tanks and whatever else are underground that you're finding were not on plans or anything. So who keeps those plans in? Are they like from fifty years ago and they just weren't?
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Found evidence from an aerial photograph from like the fifties.
Okay.
That's how, when I contacted the DEQ person, he showed me, he's like, I think I remember seeing a aerial photograph from the fifties. Black and white, real blocky. And he said, I think you can picture this. Come and find out. He had had a similar conversation with Mr. Edens.
Right. So there's nothing that could have been done beforehand by us to say, you know, this is what's going to happen? Okay. So that's just so that people know that it's not the town of Roseville's fault. We, we, we're doing our, our job here. So then my other question is what has been asked a zillion trillion times, when is the road going to open? If the work is not going to start until the beginning of the 2025, how long is that going to take? And when is Maine and Young going to be open?
So right now we're anticipating late spring, early summer.
Wow. As a resident, me, um, living here that it affects, that does not feel good. Initially, we were told, what, October? And I assumed, as majority of the other population did, that the entire intersection was going to be open. Understandable, there are issues. This is huge.
This is a major issue. This, this water line thing is a big curve ball. That's correct.
So I asked before if it could be expedited and you gave the explanation of not wanting to affect the businesses during the Christmas season. Could it be expedited by DOT, I think you said is what we're waiting on now? And if so, could it be expedited? Could it be, um, move faster earlier? And then if so, what could we do to help the businesses at that point as well?
Yeah. So I think the biggest thing when it comes to expedite now is, um, once DOT finishes approving these plans, we'll be having this, we'll have to have a sit down with Raleigh Water and see how we can do this strategically. And so that's one, that's literally the only way to expedite. But one thing that, um, you have to remember, it's a lot of water line. Like, that's a lot of water line. And, um, effort only speeds up things so much because it's a lot of water line. And because of the frequent breaks in those and it's also, it's AC line, it's asbestos concrete pipe. And so this is something that nobody builds with anymore. It's something that was outlawed in the early nineties as to being not a suitable, um, carrier of water. And this is one of those things that, um, Yes. Yes. You never know. And so.
And that's what water is currently being carried through?
It's currently carried through. And so it's not, it's not unsafe. But it's something that does not show, that, that did not prove the name of it, you know, when you say asbestos, that's the way I always say AC. It's not, it's not unsafe as far as something that carries it. But it doesn't have the lifespan. And it's one of those things where if you get close to it, you just, this is what happens. I've, and so, um, the same issue would have happened even if, so we're lowering the road. This kind of AC pipe I've experienced this in other municipalities, specifically the City of Durham. Even if we would have, if you look at the, if you look at the crown of the road, nobody ever milled it out. They just paved over it, paved over it and paved over it. And so that was probably based off the thickness of that, three or four pave over it. If ever there was a mill, like a really like, let's mill it down and you vibrated with a roller, all of those pipes would have burst. And so that's just, if you just do regular paving, like resurfacing, like we've done in the neighborhood, all those pipes would have burst.
So in the prep of this project, that was not identified as a risk at all?
City of Raleigh did not flag that as a risk when it went, when the plans went through approvals. The, they knew that the water lines were there, um, but the integrity of it is something that they, again, CIP projects typically are more reactive than proactive. And so that's something that.
So any of the consultants we hired, should they have identified it as a risk? I mean, I mean, now hindsight is 2020, but I mean, like, this is unacceptable to, um, to residents is to, for this to be closed. Sounds like it'll be closed 12 months, because it didn't say the beginning of the year, April. If you look back, it says early.
It starts early. He said, spring.
Yeah.
Summer.
So, you know, um, yeah. Who, 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 what happened? I mean, how did it, what happened when they, when, when our experts told us, we hired consultants, it's going to take two to three months, road closure, what happened?
The water line's broke. I mean, there's, there's no, the only thing to blame is father time and expired water lines and not being on top of water infrastructure. In all honesty. Those water lines should have been addressed in a CIP, um, long before this vision plan was ever even thought about. So th- those water lines should have been addressed in a CIP project. A lot of merger communities experienced this, honestly. But they should have been addressed, you know, ten years ago. Be pre-growth.
So in the planning of this project, who should have identified the water lines being banned? Or old fifty, he was saying it's fifty years old. Who should have identified them being fifty years old?
As, as a merger community, um, Raleigh Water takes full responsibility of our water and sewer.
That's why they got us approval in three days? Cause they take, took responsibility.
I mean, so the alternative with Raleigh Water doing that project is preparing contract documents, which could take
Correct.
three months, putting it out to bid, which takes two months and then.
Securing funding.
Yeah.
Securing funding as a CIP project, because they have a CIP portfolio for their merger communities that operates the same way as our CIP, um, program that we do with all of our amenities and such. And so this is something that if they did, would have hit the calendar next year. And so it'd have been a year plus of, of effort on the pre-end engineering approvals, funds being allocated to turn into a project that would have taken six months. And so the most expedited way is to add it as a change order to this project to get it done. Um, and so we, they've extended us, well, I don't want to say extended us grace, um, because they really have a choice in the matter. But, um, them providing expedited clearances for Fred Smith's company to take on the work, who I feel like they have full confidence with that. And so the only, the other option is that we, um, so there's a Raleigh Water piece and then there's the effort piece. We have to talk through what that looks like, um, on a cost scale and also on an availability, um, scale to see if there's any kind of way to expedite the work. Unfortunately, there are a lot going on in the state right now. A lot of people are being allocated to the western North Carolina. And so there, there's a shortage of, uh, we trying to order lights to illuminate a pedestrian walk and they've sent them all west. There's a lot of things going on that are creating, that are creating pressure on just the provision of labor and then the provision of the stuff to do the actual work right now. And so there's, we, um, these are things that people see on the news that you don't understand really impact what we're doing here. And so, um, the effort piece, the labor piece is one thing that we're talking through to see how, how much and how, how, how much we can do. Then there's the Raleigh Water piece that we have to think through the strategic execution of it. So those are the things we're figuring out right now. We don't have answers with. It's something that we talk about every day. And so once we, now that we have the approved design and we can have DOT on board, then we can kind of move, more intently on nailing down some of the deadlines for it, so.
So the $20 million question here besides this intersection is the Raleigh water line running right down Main Street that we're already going to fix? What's going to happen to that? I mean.
We're going to mill that all.
What's that?
The old one is going to be abandoned.
All the way through, like, I'm talking on this intersection, I'm talking from here to Cobblestone or here to Walbert.
We're just doing this.
We're just doing our section and so it's on their radar.
But I'm saying that you're going to pave all this and make it look beautiful and you're going to go through and tear it up in two years to redo this whole water line all the way down that road? Because it's the same pipe. It's not anything different. That's why I don't want to get, I don't want to get to that point where we're putting all this money into it and we're redoing it all in two years and it looks like hell again. That's the, that's the biggest question there, because I don't.
And who's paying for the water line? Is Raleigh Water paying for the replacement?
So, um, DOT is going to replace all of the water infrastructure that's underneath the surface of the road, which is about seventy percent of it. And then, um, we'll have a conversation with City of Raleigh with, since we're a merger community and we're doing the work through the project. And so it really comes down to what ends up being the cost. They're still going through the cost analysis for, um, how much it will all cost. So that's one thing. So it's DOT, they will be reimbursing that, um, under, underneath the same reimbursement that we have for the entire project. And then the rest will be, um, something we have to, we'll work with them under our merger agreement.
Commissioner Vilga's point still stands.
Yes.
This entire line is ACP, right? Or whatever? And if that's the case.
I would assume the water line. Yes.
If I don't trust it, that intersection.
It all has to be replaced.
Yeah, but the good thing, the thing that we were discovering is we can adjust our approach to the resurfacing for the main, the rest of it. And so this is something that we'll take into account now that we know it's there. We've.
It's important, I'm sorry I cut you off.
Uh huh.
I think it's important to say that the reason it was breaking was because we had removed two feet of material and found it. What, it's insulated by two feet of material plus six or eight inches of asphalt throughout the rest of the project. It mean, it's not great that you have this water line that you know needs to be replaced. But I don't think it's in danger of.
I don't know. I, I, I don't want to disagree with you, but I know, you know, five hundred feet down this West Young Street, we had a major blowout of this same line. So I know there's mess all through that line. So is there any way to remediate the existing pipe or do you have to completely replace that pipe? Is there any way to line or do anything or?
Not really.
No?
In fact. In fact, to do some of this work, to put the new line in, we're going to have to probably encase the old pipe.
Right.
So that we can work on top of it and near it without, so we can continue, you know, everyone can have water service to their homes and businesses. Because it's, it's that brittle.
I just don't want to spend $20 million or whatever we're spending on this thing to tear it up in another year or two. And so that was one question about that. The other question is, I could have heard it wrong. Burlington Mills intersection, we stopped on it to get to this intersection, but now we're not doing it with this intersection right now. So are we moving back to Burlington intersection to get that done?
So the reason that we paused work on the Burlington Mills intersection is because there was a sewer line conflict.
Okay.
Along Main Street, and we're not able to widen enough for the double left turns.
Okay.
To allow cars. We were working on this intersection first, trying to get this back in operation, trying to get the water line installed because we know it is a priority for everyone in the town. And then once the utility crews had moved off of this intersection, when they're doing the streetscape, the paving, the grading, they were going to jump down to the other section to finish that sewer work so we can widen the section of Main Street from the new Burlington Mills to the old Burlington Mills.
So can we move? I mean, we're talking two months now. Can we move down there and do that then?
We, as long as this, the contractor can schedule it, we shouldn't be a problem.
I just, it's just, I understand where, I'm in the construction industry too, not like this. You guys do a lot of stuff, but people need to see progress. They don't see this, you could put this up on everybody's TV tonight and they still don't care. They want to see progress. So if there's something where we can move this or that, or do something that's getting done, they see people, they see dirt moving, they see everything else moving. That's, you know, if there's something else on a project we'd be doing, I'd really like to see that happen if we can. Okay. This is, I don't know.
Give us a win in the win column.
And along those lines, is there anything stopping us from finishing East Young, from Main Street to East Young?
So there is a big grade drop on East Young. And to do that, we'd have to have a new signal installed because of the issue with the T intersection there. And we have to widen it out because of the barrier wall. We'd have to make it safe through the area. But then again, that is another question for the contractor that with their work scheduling and sequencing, we can definitely discuss it as that.
It has to be done at some point. Especially if we're waiting on something else, like Commissioner Vilga said, and Commissioners Nead. We need to see something, and if we're stalled in one area, let's work on the others.
So this intersection is pretty much done until sometime early next year?
What additional work? Because they finished out the temporary, the asphalt side path in front of the new cobblestone building yesterday. And then there's some more curb ramps that are going to be installed with the high-vis crosswalk between the parking lot and the Creative Exchange building. Is there, what all plans do y'all have besides that?
I was forward on the Young Street station, the water line, it's stopping the Young Street and Main Street. I mean, yeah, could we go ahead and put in temporary access? But it's going to be the same thing with the Main Street. You're going, it's, you're spending money that you shouldn't have to spend. As far as, or the way we see it as a contractor, we're trying to save you all the money. It makes more sense to do the water line and get that established to where we can actually work one side of Main Street and tie in Young Street and switch the traffic and work on the other side.
And that way you can maintain at least north-southbound traffic through the entirety of the work on the project.
And so that's one thing I want to highlight in that, when he talks about, save us money. We've built in a certain level of contingency into this project that we're tapping into even for the temporary layout right now. And one of the things that, as an internal project team, myself, essentially this overseeing the money, myself and Amy, is that we have to do this back calculation of what we will not be reimbursed for. And so as we kind of move through these things, we built in a certain level, which is typical, a certain percentage, and we have not reached that amount. Right? But, and it's scary to say that, you know, a temporary layout can cause a certain level of rework. That can be to the average person, a whole lot of money. But in the grand scheme of things, when you look at a $27 million project, it's not relatively speaking. And so that's why I'm not really saying it. But we're trying to find a path to provide the access, alleviate, but also decrease the amount or maintain controlled amount of rework that we won't be reimbursed for. And so this temporary layout here, we won't be reimbursed for it by NC DOT or Kempo. Right? This is something that we know that we won't be, we know right now, but it's not set in stone because we have already planned to go back to Kempo at a later point, have a conversation about a lot of the field changes and stuff. And so there's a possibility that we will be able to obtain. We knew that we would be able to obtain more funding at a future point for any of the things we found and discovered in the field. But those things aren't certain. And so we're balancing this thing of decrease, trying to make sure we're not increasing our non-reimbursable amount to an extent that it would hinder the project, but also trying to move it forward, move it forward as aggressively as possible. And so that's why when someone asks a question, it's like, we have to get back to you, there's a lot of engineering that has to go into it. And it's not because people aren't, are incompetent, it is because people know what they're doing. And we know, we, like, we know, to move fast, and so it was kind of like, you know, chopping down the tree. You give you three hours, you spend two, you spend two and a half hours sharpening your axe. And then you spend 30 minutes chopping the tree. And so if I were to present that to you as an imagery to say that's where we are, like, we're sharpening the axe and make sure that we find a path forward. So that's why the conversations with City of Raleigh and all these things have to be thorough to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to take a later loss based off something that was an oversight on the water lines.
So how old is this slide here? I mean, is this recent slide or?
The picture?
Yeah.
It was taken about two weeks ago.
I mean, with the water lines and all that, I mean, like, this is something I feel like we should have told the public a week and a half ago. And this would have alleviated a lot of the issues we have right now. I hate social media, but I'm just saying, like.
I understand that, but a picture without explanation is.
This is bad.
Very difficult. And so it's a technical solution that need to be talked through. And so we're, we want to try to do a more phased approach and attack certain longer arms of this line. But again, the way that we replace it has to be something that has to be approved. Now, you have approved plan, but then there's the implementation. And so if we can work with the City of Raleigh to be able to replace that, that length that goes down Young Street and then like the east and the north part, then perhaps we can make certain areas of it accessible sooner than later. Right? And so, because the heat of it will be on that south, the south main part, where we have four service lines that are connected to residents. Those, the businesses and the residences there, most of them are occupied. And then the water lines that are along the cobblestone frontage. And so that's the bulk of it, because it's a really tight space as well. And when you add in the temporary layout, it takes away from the space you have to work. And so.
Yeah, to kind of address what you're saying, Paul, as of last Friday, I was understanding that they had all the approvals and this water line was going to start being replaced immediately. So that's just how fast things change now. You know, the first time I've heard it was night. You're talking about early, early '25, and I don't even know what early '25 means, but.
February.
March. I don't know.
We didn't want to provide you tonight with the timeframe that we knew that was not going to be achievable. With that, we have the price negotiations, and the price negotiations are to help DOT reimburse for this work.
Seems like it changes every week.
Yeah, and again, like I said, I'd like to see what City of Raleigh says about that line all the way down through there. I mean, I know that's a can of worms to open up, but like, and I know it's, it's going to be replaced regardless at some point. If you have it all torn up already.
It's a can of worms we're going to open no matter what.
Right. It's the same line that's right there. So I don't know, I just don't want it to look like trash once we get done with it. I want it to look nice. It's supposed to be our downtown, so I'm concerned about, I'd like to have their input on that. And I know that's, like I said, that's way out of scope, that's way something different, but.
It goes all the way down Main Street, doesn't it?
But the rest of the work that we have to do with this project isn't as invasive as what's happening at the intersection.
The only work that would be disturbed by water line would be really the resurfacing on the middle portion of the project. I mean, it's quite a bit of asphalt, but it's not like a full reconstruction.
Famous last words, though.
Yeah, the pressure of the resurfacing, is that going to affect the brittle pipes underneath? Oh my God.
Right, that was rose-colored glasses, I think.
I think the priority is get this intersection open. That's the priority. I know what you're saying, Paul, but the priority is get this intersection.
Yeah, regardless, I mean, if you're, you know, you could still, you could work around traffic, even if you were doing that water line down through the thing. But this is priority, and I understand that, but just, I don't know, I'm just trying to think long-term with this thing. Because I don't want, like I said, you're going to strip down through there, you know, three foot wide, you've torn out this whole road that we just put in and try to explain that to the public of why it looks like hell again. I don't want to do that.
I think this needs to be communicated very, very, very well to the public. Full transparency about this summer '25 potentially.
That's why Candace is here.
Yeah, this, this is.
Your job is cut out for you, girl.
Trying to hide Candace?
Yeah, so what I don't want everyone to think is that this is like a three-month-old situation. That we've been like brushing on, this is a, this is a three-week-old situation in which I wanted to do. Yeah, time bomb, because the plan was to make the, make this update last month, but when we had those. Sorry. But when the water line issue arose, we bumped it back to this work session in order to be able to give a comprehensive update. And so there's not anything that's being brushed. It's us really solutioning to be able to bring this before you today. And so I don't want the public to think that it's like five months old, it's not.
Yeah, I think what we, what I'm struggling with, and I think April was too, that if we look at this timeline, we talking about four, four and a half months of just sitting there without replacing anything. And that's, that's a long time.
And we're getting raked over the coals already for every day that there's no work being done.
So to come in here and say you're not going to do anything to early 2025 is difficult for us to accept, really.
Well, we need to.
I think we, I think we, I think we can find a path, a pathway forward, but the goal of the presentation is to not provide you provide you a timeline that is not achievable.
Right, agreed.
And so we've been balancing a sentiment of optimism versus realism. And given frustrations around it, optimism doesn't really help when it comes to saying, well, you said this and then now it has to move. And so what we're offering, what we're presenting to you is a worst-case scenario that we hoping that we can narrow down and provide updates on at a later point, because we've been able to get traction on certain things fast, sooner than later.
How often do you guys get, like, quality updates? Like, do you get them from this, from this, from the DOT every two weeks, every, every other week? Because I'm thinking from a community perspective. Like, I guess from my perspective, as I sit here and hear what April, Commissioner Vilga and Commissioner Snead are saying, is that we just need more comms of some sort. If it's a weekly update or bi-weekly, like, whenever they get you.
We do almost daily updates on social media, and then it's been about twice a week, we're doing a news blast that gives a more expanded explanation of what's, what's going on.
There have been updates on our, the project website.
Yeah. And recent feedback we've gotten, we're, we're working to, we actually, last week, we sat down, myself, Michael and Candace, and updated the communication strategy. So we'll try to move a lot, migrate a lot of the information from the project website to make it more readily available on the town website, so that it's more accessible. I think that, you know, so we've had, we've been communicating, but people haven't been looking where the communication is. And so it's really listening to feedback to say, how can we put it in a particular place where people can find it? And so the way that we're doing it now is the daily updates and saying, this is what you'll be seeing going on. This is where we are on that. And then in the newsletter, the news blast is going out. They've, we've had these, these kind of like barriers that are kind of updated consistently as to like progress on a particular thing. The water line being one of those things.
The news blast was really good. Thank you.
They are.
Very good.
They are.
Yeah, and so we just really encourage people to subscribe. And so one thing that we've done is we've strategically worked with Parks and Recreation and added every single email that we have for the town to the news blast. And so what was a subscription base of about 1,800 people is up to like almost 9,000 people. 8,759.
Very good.
And so typically, and then we just will allow them to opt out. Because we've been asking people to subscribe to the news blast. We've done subscription to news blast at Fall Fun Fest, at the Table, Key Roll Coats. And I think that one thing that everyone needs to understand is that when it comes to communication and community engagement, we've pushed these things for the last two years. That's why we hired Candace's predecessor, Lindsay, to help update our website and create this news blast. And now we have Candace here, and now a lot of people wish they would have subscribed to the news blast at Fall Fun Fest two years ago. And so, but we're committed to doing our part with informing everyone. And I just ask that everyone kind of, on the communication front, just be more intentional in trying to obtain information. As we get feedback from the community, we change and we pivot. I mean, we updated our whole communication strategy for it to make sure we're connecting the dots better so that they understand what's going on. But in general, technical things are really, really hard to communicate in what is now the new form of communication, which is about 50 characters or less underneath the picture. And so to talk through certain things is, it's not impossible. And so we've literally said, you know, for more information, please subscribe for the news blast. You give the tidbit and say, please subscribe to the news blast. It has a more expansive explanation of what's going on.
So I have one question about this intersection as well, since we're talking underground. What about the above-ground? Because I've had a lot of questions about all the power lines and this and that, and everything else, just still around all the traffic masks and all that stuff. So is it going to look any better than it does now?
Yes.
Okay, I just.
So the, the wood poles that were there, and actually are still there now.
Yeah.
They're going to go away.
Okay.
And the metal poles that are really tall, those are gonna, the wires aren't going to be in your direct view.
Okay. It's line of sight.
Okay, they're going to be the extended.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're visible, I'm not.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
But they're not, when you're looking at the, at the streetscape, it's not going to be in your field of vision.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't think the metal though. The wood poles, they're tall.
They're tall wood.
They're tall wood.
Yeah, they're tall wood.
Oh, 55 feet. Yeah, I was, I, yeah.
And then some of the, and then they're like, and so a part of it, we will be installing conduit for some of the central utilities to be undergrounded. And so there'll be more things that'll be underground, be undergrounded. And so it'll be much cleaner than it is. But again, we ask everybody to extend grace, particularly in that corner, that northwest corner near the temporary parking lot. You'll see that there are things that are hanging there that needs to, that need to be run. A lot of the conduit for the signals, I think, has been completed. And so a lot of those things that were up are going to be going down. And so a lot of those things that were up are gonna be going down, um, underground as well.
Okay. Josh, more of your presentation? Is that it or we got more?
The only other slide that we had was the remaining Jonesville to Burlington Mills Road work. Uh, we had discussed earlier the sewer line work that would come after. Our current schedule has it coming after the water line work at the intersection. Um, we anticipate that work to start in spring of next year, based on our current schedule. Once that's completed, we'll have the remaining storm drain that needs to be installed between the new Burlington Mill intersection and the old Burlington Mills intersection. And that will allow us to widen Main Street. Once we widen Main Street and there's enough room for the dual left onto the new Burlington Mills Road, we plan to install and reconfigure all signals throughout the area. The mast arms are already in place for all of them except for one. Once we do that, we'll remove part of the old Burlington Mills Road. And then we'll tie in with the new alignment. And then once that's complete and concurrently with that, we plan on finishing the rest of the landscaping along the side, both sides of Main Street and the medians. And then we'll do the mill and repave the final lift of surface of asphalt throughout the entire project.
Estimated date of completion for everything?
Uh, we're thinking fall of next year.
So that was always the plan, by the way, is that it will be November, December of 2025 where the whole project is complete. The issue, the thing that is most disruptive and kind of at the forefront is that that Main Street intersection thing was supposed to be completed in a, a shorter amount of time. But the project in general was always planned to go through December. But, um, it was not supposed to be as invasive on the resident driver pedestrian experience in that particular area.
Any more comments, Board? I think the final one I'll make, um, and I, I don't know, I don't know how you, between you and Candace, but the thing that citizens are concerned with is they don't see anybody working. And it looks like from what I see, start of work in spring of 25 is on all the slides. So I don't know what's gonna be done between now and spring of 2025. I evidently know work, so that may be what we need to communicate. In other words, we don't need to keep communicating people who's gonna be working and then no work's going on. That's kind of what's been happening. I know a lot of commissioners been hearing that. So we definitely don't need to communicate, you know, if no work's gonna be going on because they don't see it. So if we're not gonna do anything to spring 2025, let's just make sure we put it out there. Make sure they understand that. I guess Fred Smith will go out of town or whatever, but we need to, I think as Commissioner was speaking, we need to communicate better of what they see happening out there. Not, you know, they don't care about the logistics and the water line breaking. They need to understand what's happening. I don't think they understand what's happening.
What's happening, timeline, so their businesses are being affected.
Because they see nothing happening, right? They see nothing happening.
Get it all time on videos.
Yeah, they, they have been working, but in, it's just not as substantive as people would. And so I, I understand what you're saying. Yes, sir.
I can't tell you how many videos I've gotten of saying 10:30 on Main Street and Young Street and there's nobody working. I got all kinds of them. So that's exactly what the mayor's saying and
Understood.
and, and that's what we have to communicate is, you know, we can say why, but that there are reasons why we're not working, but you're right, you know, we're not working because we're getting other things taken care of that before we can work or whatever, but the expectation is that there should be construction crews out there every day. And every day that there's not, one or more of us hear about it.
And, and from this presentation, you've convinced me that nothing's gonna happen to next sometime, sometime spring of 2025. I mean, that's all I've, that's what I took away from it. I don't know about you guys, but I don't see much happening.
Or if it is, say where it's gonna happen, that, you know, there are things happening on Main and Young that we can't work on, so we're gonna divert to,
Yeah, Burlington Mills.
Burlington Mills or Jonesville Road or wherever else we're working. But, you know, we're waiting on City of Raleigh to do the engineering or whatever it is. And that's why, you know, we're not working actively that they can see on the intersection. That's, they wanna know that.
Yeah, understood.
If they don't see it, they think, you know, we're not telling them what's going on.
Understood. So we've communicated about those things, um, the delays, um, in those news blasts. And it's only been since the, um, temporary, um, opening or layout or what have you has been opened that there hasn't been any, that, that work has been suspended. They've been working on curb ramps and also shoring up, um, the pedestrian, um, crosswalks and stuff up around the Main and Young intersection. And so I understand what you're saying and we'll roll out a more comprehensive kind of communication with it. We just encourage everybody to, um, prioritize the news blasts. Please don't opt out, um, so that you can, um, get the more in-depth, um, information. And you'll see more, more verbal updates now that we have a strong handle and understanding of where things are. Until we had the plans in place, we couldn't say that they're, we've been proactively talking about what we are doing, not what we can, what we can't do. Just because of the tonality of saying, we can't do this, we can't do that. It gets a little much, but we have been communicating about the work that we are doing, um, on the project. And so, um, we'll take all the feedback into account. I'll re-watch the video and make sure I pull out any questions you have and try to get those responses to you. And then we just encourage everybody to, um, send emails and stuff and we'll theme it and tease it out. You may not see, if there's a massive influx, you might not see an immediate response, but what we'll do is look at all of them and say, what are the big questions that keep coming up that we can kind of put in front of you to be able to do that? And we'll readily update that for the community to read and yourselves as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do have one more question, um, serio, and I'm being serious. So I do drive Granite Falls Boulevard every day. And I do see that it looks like potholes are being filled every day. Is, is Granite Falls gonna be able to hold up until summer of next year?
It should be able to hold up. Um, I.
Cause there're new ones there almost every day, too. There's new ones there now.
I mean, it was already, it was already in a, in a certain state before that. And so that was on our list of, um, places that needed attention.
Yeah, I don't think First Street and William Street's gonna hold up either.
Yeah, and so that's on our list as well to be repaved. But the, the thing that we are trying to avoid is, and so if we do the potholing, we don't wanna have multiple construction projects going on the road at the same time.
We don't. We can't close on anything else.
Right. And so that's something that we know that we're gonna have to repave those. Um, we're doing not just repaving, especially like in the Perry Street, we're doing a stormwater study as well right now with, with Ravanell. And so we won't just be like, oh, we're just gonna mill it. Like, we'll be doing some, um, major corrections in those areas as well following.
I guess my question, I was concerned about how much breakdown would be there. I mean, it's not gonna be crumbling for us. It's gonna hold up enough to last through something like so.
Yeah, if, if needed and we need to do, need to patch somewhere, we can, we can mobilize a crew to patch, you know, but we definitely won't be doing a, a resurfacing or.
No, and they've been filling them, they've been pretty good, but like, there's new ones.
They've been working hard.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, we'll be on top of that one.
Okay. That's it, Josh?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thanks. Appreciate the update. Thank you much. Any questions from the Board? Anything real quick?
I would just ask, again, these, these are things that these are things that happen when you introduce new projects and, and they meet. When new crosses with old, you get this. The age of a water line, you know, these water lines are NGIS. They're there. We did a ton of potholing in this project. Once we saw that certain things were, um, not where they were on the stretch between, um, what's the word? This is Jonesville Road?
Yes.
Jonesville Road all the way up. And so when we realized that some of those water lines were not in place, we did proactive pothole in, to locate all those services before we went through with the relocation. And so when we see something, we realize there's something there, we make sure that there's something there, there or not, and do their proactive work. And so that's, this part, um, at the, at the, with the water lines at Main and Young is definitely something that was completely unexpected. Um, and it's something that rarely, rarely happens. And so it is caught all of us off guard. Um, and there's, I think that, uh, just in the defensive stand tag, there was a lot of due diligence that was done. But this particular situation is like a perfect, it's a perfect storm. Like, it's one of those things where it really is something that you can't even imagine. Um, and so we're working through it and we'll it's hard to see the light at the end of the tunnel, um, with it. What we ask everybody is be patient, um, be, be encouraged. And, um, you know, we're working on this, uh, and it's keeping a lot of us up all night trying to push these things through. And so I also just wanted to thank our partners, Raleigh Water, Wake County, for being as lenient and thanking them for expediting everything that they can to do that. And also DOT, Raymond, he's been a gift. And so, um, we, and then we asked him to continue doubling down in our support because this is, is super important for us. And so, you know, this is my call to them to be, um, even more supportive of getting some of these things done because it's making a major impact on our community. And if it was happening on their front doorstep, it would hit them, it hit them very differently. And so we, we're asking them to act with the same urgency as if it was happening, um, on their front doorstep.
Thank you for your diligence.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you again, Josh. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Um, so I, I know we got a lot done. Appreciate the Board, um, all the hard work, um, you guys put in tonight getting through some of this, um, this material. So just appreciate that. And without any opposition, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. One, one last reminder, we got Fall Fest this weekend, Saturday, so, um, I think it's gonna be a good event. Hope the weather's good. So get out for that. Enjoy that, enjoy that time, if you would, with the family and stuff. So, um, without any opposition, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.